Once again, on behalf of Sowalika Local Municipality, please allow me to welcome you to this gathering and urge you to lift the bar and take the battle of housing and sustainable human settlement to a high level. I wish you a robust and creative engagement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, MMC for welcoming us. MMC, you are now, you can join your people to make your input because you're part of the citizen. You, thank you very much for welcoming us. You can have a seat next to you. The purpose of the day, as the MMC has indicated, is to solicit your views on the housing consumer protection bill. Before I proceed, I just want to check, before parliament comes and holds the public hearing, we send the advance team to come and educate people about the bill that would be conducting a public hearing on. I just want to check how many of the people in the hall have attended that education workshop? Are we comfortable with the translation of Sulu only? Okay, nobody would say I was excluded from the public hearing because of the languages? Because there was a workshop that was run, I'll try to summarize the bill for those that have not attended the public hearing so that we are at par. the Housing Consumer Protection Bill seeks to repeal the Housing Consumer Protection Measures Act of 1998. And the bill, the Act, Housing Consumer Protection Act of 1998 started to operate on the Fourth of June 1999. And the Department of Human Settlement and the National Home Builders Registration Council as the regulatory board, as they were implementing the legislation, they realized that, since they've been amending this act, they realized that there is a need to repeal the act because the changes were substantial. So therefore, they had to rework it so that it can strengthen to protect the consumers. In Jongo, yalo mtetosivivinywa, esizo kuluma ngao namuja, lo wogu mtetogo sivivinywa wogu figelwa, wa bate ngibe zinlu. In Jongo, ugo tigutri tewa mtetolo, ubizogo ugo tiguhousing Consumer Protection Measures Act of 1998, owa kala ubsebenza, omklaka Four June 1999. Ganti umnia ngo wozo klaliswaga bantu kanyenye National Home Builders Registration Council, ba yebashloza, izintzalelo eziko na gulemmteto, gumi bandela yaleomteto, ba yebabona nugu tige wakubano mtelela, o nga tignegi lapo, inga kokebona ba yebashala pansi babonisana, babona isiti ngo soguti ilemiteto gufanlo ugo tigubiegeze. The Housing Consumer Protection Bill seeks to ensure adequate protection of housing consumers and effective regulation of home builders, home building industry, by inter alia strengthening the regulatory mechanisms, strengthening the protection of housing consumers, introducing effective enforcement mechanism and prescribing appropriate penalty or sanction to deter non-compliance by home builders. In Jongo, yao ucho se ugo tigubiegele abate ngibe zinlu, no go tigulaule ngeljela, esebenzeka ayo lemboni yogwakiwa kwe zinlu, kanyenye no gusimamiswa kwe zinjela sogulaula lumkaka nomalemboni, kanyenye no ugu pekelela, ugu kniswa, ugu figeleka, wa bate ngibe zinlu, ngo ugo tigube konna imi bandela, gulemteto epegelele, uku klauliswa, gulaabo abangasbandaka, gono ma abaka izinlu abangasbandakani na lumketo. In addition, the bill seeks to address the economic transformation of the industry through the introduction of the provision relating to the warranty fund surplus which may be utilized towards developmental programs for the home building. Ngapeswa loko lummtetosivivinywa, ucho se ugu pekelela, uku chelo kabusha, ngazomnoto, gulemboni, ngo ugo tigube konna imi bandela, epegelele uku sechenziswa, kwe zimali ezisela zalesi kwame sbiza ugo tiguarantifund, ukuze isechenziselu ezintjalo sogututugisa lemboni yogwakiwa kwe zinlu. The bill seeks to create an enabling environment for new entrants into the home building industry through the introduction of contractual provisions that ensure their stability in the market. Lummtetosivivinywa, ucho se uku akaisimo, esizo pegelela, abasa sebaasha, nama abasa fufusa, abanganagulemboni yogu akizinlu, ngo ugo tigube konna imi bandela, wokwe kontilaka yoku kinsegisa, uko simama gule market. And the bill seeks further to, the bill further seeks to align and create synergy with other relevant pieces of legislation such as the Public Finance Management Act of 1999 and the Promotion of Administrative Justice Act of 2000. Lummtetosivivinywa, ugo tiguchose ugo uko kondisa, kanyenye no guhambe lana, kwe minye imiteto ehambelana ayo, efana ne Public Finance Management Act of 1999, kanyenye lummtetosibizi ugo tigumotion of Administrative Justice Act of 2000. And the summary of the provision of the bill is follows: Chapter one of the bill deals with the definition, application of the act and application of the Public Finance Management Act to the council. Isifino sa, sa imbandela lummtetosivivinywa, isi kabasogutka, isachuga sogutka lasalummtetosivivinywa, si pegelele inazelo, uku sechenziswa wa lummteto, kanyenye no uku sechenziswa kwe mteto owe Public Finance Management Act gulumkanju. And the bill makes provision for, inter alia, the definition of the bill to expand the protection of afforded housing consumers by including repairs, renovation, alteration and additions to an existing home under the council regulatory regime. Lummteto u, unemi bandela, pa tigwe minya, yogupegelela inazelo, yogu akap, no go tige wandi se ugu pegelela, ugu figelwa, wa bate ngizinlu, ugu fagelela, uku lungiswa, uku akiwakabusha, uku shinja, kanyenye no uku nazela isi akiwesesi konanga pansi wa limiteto yogulaula yalumkanju. And the scope of application of the legislation is extended to include not only builders who undertake home building as a business, but also owners' builders. Owners' builders are included in the definition of a home builder and are required to register with the council. In ngeki ti, uku sechenziswa wa lummteto, iandi so uku bandakanya, labo abaza kelayo, wokwe biznesi, ganti ugo tiga labo abaza kelayo, ba yama inazelo yakwana iya bandakani wa lagu wabaka izinlu, ugo tigya tinge yaga ugo tigaba paliso lumkanju. And chapter two of the bill seeks to provide for the continuation of the council established in terms of section two of the act as a jurisdiction person to be known as the National Home Builders Regulatory Council. It further seeks to provide for the objectives of the council, governance and structures of the council. Isachuga sespili salummtetosivivinywa, isichose uku kuchikiiswa wa lumkanju, owasungula uku ya ngesikabasespili somteto, uku ya ngesikabasespili somteto, uku akaloko ubizogo ugo tigunational home building regulatory council, ganti ugo tigipegelele, uku pega izin Jongo salumkanju, ubupati, kanyenye nezintjaga salumkanju. Chapter three of the bill seeks to provide for the registration of the home builders and developers, the establishment of the register of home builders, the requirement of registration, suspension of registration, grading of home builders and liabilities of unregistered home builders and developers. Isachuga sesatso salummtetosivivinywa, isichose uku uku bonelela, uku paliso wa abaka izinlu, uko sungula kwe register yalaabo abaka izinlu, izinfunekos ogupalisa, uko miswa kwe skashana ogupalisa, kanyenye no uku bonelelo kwamazinga wa labo abaka izinlu, uku teweswa itala wa labo abaka izinlu abangapalisiwé. And chapter four of the bill seeks to provide for the establishment of the register of enrollment, the enrollment of a home prior to the commencement of its construction by a home builder, consequences for failure to enroll a home, duties in respect of the subsidy housing project and the consequences of a failure by a member of the executive council or a member of mayoral committee responsible for human settlement, a social housing institutions or a subsidy housing delivery agents to comply with the provision of the act. Isachuga sesinesona si salummtetosivivinywa, si pegelele uku bonelela, uko sungula kwe register yogupalisa, uku palisa kwamakaya ngapamgo ugo tigutkalwe ugu akar uloyo uka izinlu, ganti u nemipumela oma uloyo oma uka izinlu echulegi le uku palisa, uku bonelela imisabensi, yoma project kwe zinlu ezikasiwe, ganti uba nemipumela yoku chulega kwe lungu lesiku ngu MEC, nama UMMC, abapegelele ezogulaliswa wa bantu, kanyenye neziku muzeze zinju Social Housing Institution, nama upigo, lo ugu pegelela uku akiwakwe zinlu zonkaso, ugo tigabasbandakani nemibandela yalummteto. Chapter five of the bill seeks to provide for the funds of the council, the home warranty fund, additional funding through money appropriated by parliament as the council's regulatory mandate is a public function, the establishment of a non-profit company, management of funds, the fees of the council, commencement and the duration of the warranty, the maximum and the minimum amount payable from the warranty fund, claims and limitations. Isachuga sesklado salummtetosivivinywa, sonesona sichose uku pegelela, isi kwama salumkanju, no uku pegelela, isi kwama sogutkunsegisa uku nga ugele, kanyea ugo tiguelela, ugo tigelezosmali ezabiwé yipalamende, njongo uku lomkanju ugo tigupegelela, ugo tijjongo ba gume sibezo mpagati, no uko sungula kwen kampani engenzinzuzo, uku patwa wa lesi zikwama nama lezosmali, kanyenye no uku pegelela izmali zalumkanju, uko sungula kanyenye isi kati sa se kinsegisa, kanyenye no uku pegelela, isa ambaye sukwa kenwa gulesi zikwama, sogu bonelela, uku fele gunga chosiwe, kanyenye no uku pegelela, islingani so ezigaba konna. And chapter six of the bill seeks to prohibit the procurement of services to build a home which form part of the subsidy housing project from a home builder who is not registered with the council, relies on a home that was not enrolled with the council in his tender submission, who previously failed to rectify or complete the ratification of the structural defect as directed by the council without a reasonable grounds or who failed to disclose any information prescribed by the Minister of Human Settlement. Isachuga sesnesona sichose uku uku nganda, uku niga zo kwe mesebenzi, gulaabo abaka uku akar izinlu, guma project kwe zinlu ezikaso uhulmeni ngesmali, ugo tilaabo abaka izinlu nga palisile na layomkanju, na lezozinlu no uku pegelela, laba abato no uku pegelela amatenda, wale council, nama umkanju, na labo abashulega ugo tigbalungi se lapo beba yen zbatale umonaga lokona nomabangekanga izinlu ezise zingeni elifanele, njongo ba ikansela, nama umkanju ubayale ugo tigbaguensanjalu, uma kungekwa zizatu ezizwagalayo, ugo tiguma beschulega ugo tigbatalu le nama ulupi ulua ziku ngonnoche bezogulaliswa wa bantu. And chapter seven of the bill seeks to provide for the enforcement of the provision of the bill once enacted. It also seeks to provide for the appointment and the duties of inspectors, their establishment and the powers of the compliance and enforcement committees, matters related to administrative and substantive non-compliance and penalties related to. The chapter further seeks to provide for alternative dispute resolution, criminal offenses and sanctions. Isachuga seskombisa sonesona salummtetosivivinywa, si pegelele uku uku bonelela, nama uku potelela imi bandela yalummtetosivivinywa, umase gume mteto owamgele. Ugo tigipegelele no ugo tige uku kowe na mesebenzi yabashuli ama inspectors, no ugo tige uko sungula no we nama kunya, we committee, elikapayo ngo ku sbandakanya lummteto, nezinye izinda abazo ubupati, uku pegelela uku nga sbandakani na limiteto, no ugo tig, kanyenye no uku pegelela, ugo tigba yeshaliso labo abanga landelu limiteto uku ya ngemibandela yalummtetosivivinywa, kanyenye nezinyatela abazotatela sonesona no uku klauliswa. The chapter eight of the bill seeks to provide for various matters include the home builders manual, the making of the rules by the council and of the regulations by the minister, the recovery of the fees, the vicarious liabilities, liability, the personal liability of the members, directors, trustees of the home builders, duties of the estate agency, estate agent, financial institution, conveyance, the code of conduct of the council members, home builders, developers and other industrial role players. This chapter also deals with the transitional matters. Isachuga seschakalumbiliso nage, si pegelele uku bonelela, izinda beztila matkonanage, nezogu akiwakwe zinlu, no go tige uke konna imiteto yomkanju laula u ngonnoche, uku pegelela uku tewagala kwe smali, uku teweswa kwe kala woknga kondile, kanyenye no uku teweswa kwe kala womuntu nama lungu abakondisi, nabakapis kwama ma trustees wa labo abaka izinlu, imisabensi yama abate ngisa izinlu ma estate agents izukungo zezimali, na labo abapa lisa impaala, kanyenye no uku pegelela uku spata wa nama lungu walumkanju, abaka izinlu nabatutugisa yo, kanyena bobonke ababamba ikasa gulemboni, lummteto wana upegelele ugo tiguzinda abazogu tige uku sibenza wa imibande. On economic employment and infrastructure development, as noted above, the bill seeks to provide for the warranty fund surplus to be utilized towards transformative human settlement developmental program which facilitate growth, skills development and economic transformation in the home building industry. Umase si pegelela kwe zomnoto, imisabensi kanyenye no uku tutugiisa kwe ngalasisinda, njago ba gupaliwe ngapesu, ugo tijlummtetosivivinywa upegelele uku kinsegisa, uku sechenzisaga lezosmali ze lezos kwama se kinsagwa yuarantifund, ugo tigisechenziselu uku chela kabusha, kanyenye no uku tutugiisa kwe zokala, ezintjalo sogututugisa nezogulaliswa kwe wa bantu, uku pegelela uku kula, uku tutugiisa wa makono wemsebenzi, uku chelwa kabusha kwe zomnoto gulemboni yeso uku akar izin. And the bill seeks to provide emerging home builders greater access and the protection through equitable registration requirement, a grading system, the regulation of certain contractual matters and continuation development and training. The proposed provision covering the contractual matters between the home builders, developers and employees are meant to contribute towards the sustainability of emerging home builders and the growth of the home building industry. Lummtetosivivinywa, ucho se uku pegelela, abaka izinlu abasa fufusa, uku bakela amatuba, kanyenye no uku uku figela, uku pegelela, uku bakwanako uki linga lingana, sogupalisa, kanyenye nezinfuna sogupalisa, no uku pegelela amazinga uwa akar, kanyenye no ulaula izinda basa kwe zekontraki, kanyenye no uku pegelela uku begisa intutugo, kanyenye no uku tagekeshwa. Nemi bandela etongoziwe, epegelele lesi ndabazama kontrak pa tigwalabo abaka izinlu, abatutugisi bendao, kanyenye nabatashi, uku pegelelo ugo tiguponze esivifaneni, egusimamiseni wa labo abaka izinlu abasa fufusa, no uku pegelela uku kula wa lemboni yogwakiwa kwe zinlu. That is the summary of the bill for those that have not managed to attend the workshop. Isoge isifino salummtetosivivinywa, gulaabo abanga wazanga uku bakwanako laoma workshop. So I'm going to now open the floor for yourselves to make input on the bill. But before I do that, the sound people request that they want to switch to the electricity because the electricity has come back. They must switch all, they must switch the plugs. So, but you can, we can continue as, because I'm just noting people. Manje, isegizo niga za ituba no ugo tineze nizo kipa imi bonoyenu, koto angapamgo ugo tisense loko, laba tu otrope shama technicians, bati bazotre ugo tigbatime, ngo bangatuke suzohamba, baguazogo tigbatanga nisega hee intambo zabo. Koto agengitaba ugo tige singa kubega, laba abatan ugo tigabuze imi buzobeze laga pambili, I saw that you are within three minutes and then the rest you submit to the team here. Ngizo, tela ugo tigubuntu ngamonya ngizomniga imisuzi emitach uku pelela, ugo tigakulumela, ngizo sa, ugo tiggniga za abanya ituba uma laba bateta, koto agegukona itimba lechu la elislegalela yo, uma ugo tigwenze ise chulo esipaliwe unga na wasmigi sa gubo, nama ungezila ngapambiluso kuluu. And as you speak, as you speak, you must indicate your name, whether you support the bill or you reject the bill or you are neutral. You're welcome to do that. Njongo banenza njalu, uma uniga za ituba logo zalanga pambili, sita ugo tigukulumeka malako, ucho ugo tiguyalsegela in lummtetosivivinywa, uyayisapata nama uyisegeli, nama umenge pakatnenda uvimelegi, uguensanjalu. Just before we start, amongst us, do we have disability people here? Ngapamgo ugo tisikale, ngabe gukona bantaba kubaze gile laga gukona bantaba kubaze gile laga pagati. Okay, I'm going to give them the opportunity if they want to speak. We are not forcing anybody to speak, but if you want to speak, we want to prioritize them. Sizo, tela ugo tisikale, ngabo uku baniga za ituba asibapotele ugo tigabusa imibuzu, uma gukona imibuzu batan ugu ibuza, sita ugo tigisikale ngabo. You want to speak ma? Okay, let's give them the mic.
Nginbingelela nonke inkine, iparlamenta njegoba selfigile gitze, msualikuwa. Ngine konsela ekteni, uma ngabe uyayithola indlu, abazali baithola indlu, then abantuana basese banani. Uma se iteni swale indlu, lavantuana, bana loyinlungelo, lokbuyela emunga, ba yufuna indlu, uma ngabe bakuile, sektholagala ugu timanjaye indlu layo, se itensiwe, sekfunaga uye kubameli, unetisability, umuntuana awsebenzi, awunaniksi, konge wako, uyashabalala, uma ngabe ushono umumtumtala, uneni, uma ngabe indliako, itensiwe, ngia bo.
Just one question. Thank you first of all, thank you for coming as the parliament. So the question that I have, it's about the houses. We as children, our parents have houses and only to find that later on those houses are being sold. And now we want that houses again, so are we able to get help? Because we are, some of us, we are not, we are not, we are not unemployed first of all and we have disability, so we don't have money to claim back that house. So can you help us regarding that matter of houses if the house has already been sold?
If, if you are a child, your parents has to sell the house or whoever who's responsible, because this is house, parliament cannot stop, but what parliament can do? Parliament can give you a subsidy for those remaining infants or disability person. And that's why parliament minister, sorry, minister executive, who's the minister of human settlement, not parliament minister, who's responsible for human settlement. Would then you have to go to your nearest what councillor or council to indicate to them that your house has been taken then, or your family has sold the house, then you can then be put on the list. But what is important is that people with disability and childhooded families, minister had taken a decision to prioritize them on the list. If you have childhooded families, you have people with disability and elderly people, they are not supposed to queue on the list of beneficiaries. I just thought I must clarify this one because I've invited umama, but here we are, here to talk about the bill that is trying to regulate the building of houses in the country.
Aganitatrisage, loku, ugu kala uma abazali benindlu, besebeytaisa. Xemandlinabu guenza kanjalo, iparlamenta kuken ngawenza uku zelitsize, ngoba indlu eyabo. Kotoa ge sitige umuntuana uwe na opete ekaya, nama mchambi ukubazegele, nama ukulile, uhulumeni ke, nama ungongoche wezoklaliswa wabantu, angaksiza esmwenesinjalo, kotoa agaksizi endabeni ugu ti kubuiswe leyandlu, ngoba kwangaya abazalbako, kotoa angaksiza ugu ti afage ohshwiindi, loabantu abazothola izindlu, futu ungongoche ke wezoklaliswa wabantu, usebeke ekuluini. Ugu ti bonka bantaba kubazegele, abantu abakulile nawatala, nabantuana abakabaholayo emakaya, uku yibo abasinklogo ze zindu, ababewe pezu, lugu lolulu, kunogu ti babambe ili ullolunemunga mua, buna baba bewakal, ngako ibona abasiswa kal. Ngako ngitanitatrisa loku, ngoba injongo yokuza lapo, ngokzototla. Sizo, ototla ngalo lomteto esvivino, uku vigela ama kasmende ezindu. Ngako yonamteto svivinya, esizo tela uvoluenu kuon.
So, this is a public hearing to get your views around the bill. How should strengthen this bill so that you get covered as consumers? Because the intention of the bill is to protect you consumers.
Ngako lapo, lomteto svivinya, eosi zenga wa gulembizo, ugu ti sitoli uvoluenu, nibene kalelo kuona. Ugu ti sngawenza kanjano sebenzi, ngoba lomteto svivinya, uzovigela we na njenge kasmende lenlu.
So I'm now going to open for the inputs from the floor. Three minutes, let's check our time. When I raise my, my mic like this, means your three minutes is gone.
Aige, sengye ivula ge inkunla, umuntu, nomuntu zo kulumu mzu semtatu, umu mzu semtatu si pelile, uzobona ugu ti ngpara miselombo, ngopangue upara misele pezu. Gyo shuku sespelile, egiskatsa.
I would like to greet the president of the Economic Freedom Fighter Julius Malama in absentia, I would also like to greet our commissar Nulbyo Daphne and I'd also like to greet the member of parliament and the community. My name is Muntunzi Yende. We support the bill with the following submission and recommendation. As you can see, the attendance of those who benefited in the so-called RDP houses, contractors who benefited, occupant, occupant and amount and illegal process of tendering system which left out the masses of our people vulnerable. Our people were left disgranted living in an environment and houses of a lower and unacceptable condition. For many years, our people have complained about the quality and standard of houses without any help because of the failure of the NHRBC, which operates like a cartel. This is mainly the case with the RDP houses that were built by dishonest contractors. We welcome the bill that will protect homeowners from poor quality building. Through the registration of home builders depends on the quality standard of home building. While we welcome the strengthening of the home warranty fund, the fund must only be accessible to the rich building, house in suburbs and estate, but also to all who are building including in township and rural areas. We hope that our people will legally be protected by this bill and hold those who are responsible accountable. I thank you.
Thank you, good example, thank you very much, you have said the tone. Next, after they've translated.
Kala, kala ngobingelela umhuli wa ma Freedom Fighters, uchulia smalama, ongeko lapo, pinda bingelele ge namaluongo omparati akona lapo, njegoba ezile namchange, ikamalame Muntunzi Yende, ngizela panami, uku uku shoko kala ugu ti lomteto svivinya, ngia usegela, ugu ti ma ubekona. Kotoa njego basngabona, bantaba ningi bazuzile gulezindu, gulezindlu za ma RDP ezivela, kuuhulumeni ayebenzela zona, kotoa ku kona owenze gayo ngazo, se ku iskatesite abaninga, bahlala gulezindu bekala. Bakaliswa izinga lezindu, inlela eli ngayo, eli pansi ngayo, aliko ezinge nelfane. Manje, se atela ugu ti lesiswa ma lesi oktiwa sakiwé, oktiwa i warranty fund, nomi skavu kama si kinseki so, sitalu ugu ti lesesmali, uma zipuma. Ma zngapume likpela abantaba isamba nelakondo, abahlala ezindlini za lema dolopeni. Lesi imali, ma zifige na lapagi ti emakaya, sizo sisiza, ugu zenati siwazuk tutuka, kotoa ge ngalewa loko, lomteto svivinya, nami ngia usegela. Aige, ushalo ubeke ese boanga, ugu ti walala gamnandi, wa ivula gamnandi, ngunla, ugu ti abambe iskatsa.
N'abonga, ntanduk bingelela, umhuli bukona, ikakulube IFF commissar. Tanduk bingelela namparati, my name is Mangoba Njovu, Piar Councillor, IFF, Imsualikuwa. We do support this bill based on these three points I'm about to mention. We accept that it is difficult to apply the bill to temporary buildings, structures forming part of informal settlements or shacks. However, the decision to exclude the application of the bill to structures that do not have their own bathrooms or toilets is based on misguided European misconception of what qualities what qualifies as a building. People in rural areas build differently to those in the city with land constraints and therefore they do not always build homes that have attached them, attached to them, a toilet and a bathroom or even a kitchen. Therefore, this exclusion must be removed from this bill. I thank you.
Aige. Thank you very much.
O kala, tanduksugu mango ku ta bingelele, boongu buholi, be IFF, bese eti ngia wangugela, lomteto svivinya, okulunya lapo ngawa, uyamugeleka, kotoa, kunezinto njezimbaloa, ntandu xisho ngawa lomteto svivinya. O kala, kufanelesvu, mugu ti namchange makaya, kunezindawa ezakiwe izindu, ezinge ko, ognazonizindu ezngahlala iskatesite, ewe ezngamatemorali, nama ezeskashan. Kuna bantu lapaparati wetu abahlala emikukwini, kuna bantu abahlala ezindlini, utolo ugu ti indliangasese ingapandle aillanganene indlu. Manje, istelo si ugu ti, lomteto svivinya, ma unghalanani sipela loku abasenchona langabati indlu, uma ugu ti ekaya, ku kona indliangasese parati, ne kishili parati. Kotoa, lomteto svivinya ma ushanganise, na loku nati esahlala ku kolapa, eme indawenza gitie, kotoa upinde futi upegelela, ugu ti lesiskajana esiti loko ma guna, ma guna bibiko, kufanelesisuswe ku lomteto svivinya, lomteto svivinya ubandaganya konke njee, lokutnati emakaya sipega, ugu ti ezindawa zetu zokla.
I'm Lakindla Po from Suwalikuwa Sabri Jeans. Greetings to the CIC, the presidents of the IFF in absentia, to the commissar of the IFF, members of the parliament, I greet you all and the house as well. For many years, the home building, construction sector has been dominated and continues to be dominated by a few whites together with NHRBC. The registration requirement appears fear, but the practical implications of the strengthened requirement may be used to exclude entrant home builders who are mostly backup contractors. The use of the surplus of the home warranty fund to finance transformation measures in the industry must clearly specify that some of the funds will be used to assist black entrants with registration and this must be reported on annual. Failure to address clearly how the legislation will ensure that it supports the entrance of black contractors and transform the industry will only serve to create a white owner owned industry presented as a way to protect homeowners. We welcome a bill that will protect homeowners from poor quality building through the registration of home builders depend on the quality and standard of home builders. I thank you.
Aige, ikamalame Ullakin Tlapo, ugu kala ntanda uku shoku ti, se ku iskatesite, uma ku zwanjie, gulezinda bazogwakiwa wezi, lomkaka uloku ukondiswa, ilanzana laba mchopi, futi loku ligwenza ngenga libambi sene na loku kbizogu ti NHRBC. Manje, istelo ugu tige uku paliso agemange, ma gwenziwe, kube ogungenzeleli. Okshanganisa uongu muntu, futi tatu inyatelo zo ugu ti lemali epuma guleziskwama, iseshenziswe, na ngabantu abamnyama, abasakala, nabobaltholusi zo, ngisho besafufusa. Beso kuesbili, uksulega agemange, ugsingatagaleno muglungi salenda ba. Ku ye gwenzo ugu ti abaningo sonkontilega, abamnyama, bazame, lento kufanele kuulu, ilungiswe uguze illanganise uongu muntu. Ngako, i, u, 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 umteto svivinya, wena ngowawo, sia usegela. Kotoa, ingobo, uma uzobandaganya, uongu muntu, unabandagani ilanzana eli mchopi, eli laba mchaloa, labelu.
Ngibingelele, ubholi obkona la injene, ngibingelele namparati wonke okona. Ikamalame, Umlunge Sinjovu, okamga kumaspala wa Sepixli, Follcrust. Ibili ngia isapota ka ku. Loko kuzogwenzogu ti abantu baguazi, okthola izindu ez equality, ne material ezoseshenziswa lapo ezobe equality. Kotoa ge, ngiwari tiganani, ugu ti ez, abantaba thalimakaya, angoni lebili iba kava, izatuo samso ngisho kanjalo, abahlalimakaya abakelwe ngodak, bakelwe ngimku. Loko uku shuti bona, abaguazu registrala we NHPRC, ngia bo.
My name is Umlunge Sinjovu, I'm coming from Pixli in Follcrust. First of all, we want to accept and support the bill, but the only concern that we have is that this bill only, first of all, this bill will improve the quality of our house that we have, but the only concern that I have is that this bill doesn't cover us from rural areas where we live in the mad houses, where we live in the shacks. So now, I wonder if is there anything that can be done to rectify that so that this bill will also cover us in the rural areas with our own structures that we have.
Siabo. Ngibingelela ngaparati enjene, ngalubingelela ubholi bonke obkona, pinde ngibingelela ama okana zishins, ngokshuwa shluwana. Pinde ngisho eti ngela, uku isega, ingulumesu kulu niwe, ngaparati enjene. Si pinde, saspanes telo, so ugu ti, ngaparati, iparlamenta si tela ugu ti lipinde lisbonelele entweni, ei fanano ugu ti, se uku nyaso, lomteto fana nalo, si tela besese ngia bonelela, ekteni, uma abanpezo thola lezo zindu, nama uye zifana nama RDPs, nama fofis, esisho kanjalo. Aga kubuke, ugu ti kupaliswa abantu abanjani kal. Si gesezwa, ngibatu pili principal, patasi boni, imsebenza ngendela ei. I, itisability, iskatinesningi, uma unaziwa ilabona labo, abanpakona bayibanga pumelili, ekteni bakone uku palis. Ube childhood household, ababonelili, ugu ya pambili, ube abantaba dala, aban, 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 aban dala, ababonelela. So bestela ugu ti, labantu abanga koni, uku finelela pambili, ugu ti bazuse, abey bona, ababababonelela kal, because iskatinesningi, si esibone, uku anda ngoba informal settlement, ngiatavanga iparlamenta ite umaliza, alzangili hlepezu, veli, inlule njelitima inlula, ma okamga ngapa, uha kuama informal settlement, ma okamga ngapa, uha kuama informal settlement. So, uguze ku pese izintezinyalo, si tela iparlamenta ingenelele, gulezindu ezakiwayo, kanti sezina, abaniga zitise, kube kona umuntu onezindu nga five, abanye bantu babiwalili ezindli. Sa tela ka ku, ugu ti iparlamenta libukelele entweni fana nalezo, siza uku kono kubegela pambili, na kogonke, ne, 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 ngoba mkomu, ganyen iparlamenta si kone uku shuni ipa, siabo.
Greetings to our leaders, to different organization. Firstly, I would like to say we support the bill and now there is one request that we ask the parliament to help us with. It's regarding the housing, we normally call it RDP. It's regarding the housing, eh, we normally call it R T P houses. So we want to know what kind of people are approved to get those R T P houses. Because right now, they are childheaded household, there are people who with disability. Eh, those people today, if you are not known, then you won't get a house. So now, we ask please as the parliament to help us so that all those people that I've just mentioned can be helped so quickly because we desperately need the houses. And please, also the parliament should monitor to see, because there are people right now who own five houses, R T P houses, only to find that many people in the township, they don't have houses. So that's also one of the requests that we'll ask you as a parliament to help us with.
Before we proceed, I want the speaker to come and give us the names of a person who's owning five houses of R T P. Must come and register there.
Sizotela lo, osandaksuka konama, manje, uku ba ezze azo palisa lapa kuleli timba. Ngoba sanga tanda pelu ku ilungi salenda, beka kuligazi, ngomundo thola galamplampu kutune zinlu, ezingo five is R T P. So saktela uze uzo palisa.
Proceed. Um, um, masala la neng, can we become quiet? Um, I didn't mention that you are fortunate that today you have joined the parliament. Therefore, it's important that we observe the rules of parliament, that we listen to one another. Even if we heckle, we must lower our voice so that we don't disturb the speakers on the floor. Can we do that? Please?
Tando uku shogi namlanje, ni ne lunga lo, loku ba se parlamente, ngisho kwenze kilesiba nezin kenga neztila, kotwa, si se parlamente njenga manje, nako sizotela uku ti mlambo uma kona umundo ozilela pa zo kuluma, sisa ama ukuwelysumsi ndo ukuze simu zwe, singa mpazamis.
Nyangibingelela nonke, ngisobingeleli parlamente lechu. Nyabo ngakaku, loko kuti parlamente, nku siyamelize, ifire nati lagiti eh Emel. Bon ngakaku, mena ngompegeni Petros Twala, bangbizuka government. Eh, lapa eh, mani ngia bon, ichuba esicholili. Eh, bele la ezindabense zinlu, lama RTP, unen kenga inkulu ka ku.
Usegela um, bill ora no sekela?
Ay, ay, bill ngia isegela. Nga isegela nganpeela, neti je ente ngo keela, go ku shoku kuti, i ikondi siswe kaxi. Lama RTP, unen kenga yenza kala, usengakasali giyo. Usa telefondo echi, se bakali ile, soyaku ele tawena, soyapatali. Usengakasali gi, eh, ifu, ifu eh, vinama, agwenze ureseshi, bonaga, go ku shoku kuti, aksinxalo na, uya kalo ngendente nso kulete ma lele pezu. Ente yenza kala, lama RTP, awabu kwen kosi amgo ku shoku, abantu abakayo, bakangende lefanele, e asen simene siyiso yin. Isesen kenga ne inkulu la, lama RTP, kuna bandu se bato la machu bansho kuti bona, akona ku shuti ayovu gala, lapa kaguazu no waaka. Sinen kenga inkulu ka ku, ngukela go ku shuti, asenige nibu kwen kosi amparlamentu ku shoku, abantu abahlala lama RTP, ukale uku ipatala nini. Uku ti, uma uzo tu ungeena injini, ku chwa net may telefondo echi, soyakala wena, uya ku ele, uya ku ele, maspa, nganpeela uyo sufwe unga keituku, uku ipatala ninlu. Ena ngapa, mena ngendele ngasngas go ku ti, ama RTP, awetu zakamisi. Chine zakamisa skawachol ma RTP. Marsa kuno umto ngalala, osona eh RTP. Ungama ngala, yo ku ti, ngangakanga na sixty years, anao musu am. Marumto ana wangona intitu, una yu in, ye. Ngape, pangmanje, ngapipela lapangbonisa, ntenkulu mangala, base ba chengisa inli ami ku RTP, ba ichengisa, na ali pepa likon.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you take that paper and go and register there? We'll find the person who has sold your house.
Nyabo, ngisagwenza.
Ika, ika malame, ika malame, umpegeni Petros Twala, abanyebangbiza ngo kuti ngu government. Nga usegela lomthetosivivinyo, oh, lomthetosivivinyo, nga usegela, nga hambisaana now. Oh, excuse me. My name is Mpegeni Petros eh Twala. I support eh the bill and now, the first three things that I would like to mention about the issue of R T P houses is that it has been noted that while, even before they build the houses, while the house is still on foundation without even walls, at that time, you owe municipality. So that's the first thing that we experience. So how can I owe someone even at the time when I don't even have a house? But that's the first thing that I ask the parliament to look at. And the second one, the parliament must look at those people who are chance takers. They come and say we are able to build and they will build those houses and that wasn't even last longer. So the quality as well as those people who say, who call themselves as builders, they must have looked. And the third one, today, my understanding is that the houses are for us as people who from that location, but now you find people coming outside, they have the houses, R T P houses here. And now I'm around in sixty years age. So you find that a person who was born in nineteen ninety-two is owning a house. I'm sixty-something years, but I don't have a house. So I think all these things needs to be rectified.
Ngibingeleli parlamente, ngibingelele nompaga ti, ngibingelela uongama kanse la kona, napagati. Eh, umpegelili mlambo eh Follcrust, eh Watford, iske luk, ma'am. Eh, mena ngikalu buza la ku lepili de ekon eh, ngia isapota na uka kuli pili ekon. Ngikalu buza la ku lepili eh, njenga tina, esiredi bele, esisakili zinle, makasi zakelitina. Ngoba kchwa, ku lepili, kchwa kona la izinlu la, ku melu register, umaki, besa guregista, ivine uloku njano wena mneza wae ninlu. So chinasakela lezo zinlu, lezo zibambe lenju maki, ngata kakinu. So anazu ku wenzagala kanjani lapa, kuti orete zesakile, sesa njani ngalo. Ukuwesbili, ngikalu buza, ma ngabe unen yu RTP. Besu ge itiliza nte RTP, upinde, ubesi uya kaga busha wena, eyakilu, wakanjela ufunanga, uyegela RTP, uyikishe RTP, uyale pansu wena, wakelaya, akui funaye. Lapo ku wenzagala kanjani, abanapinde futu, ngafanilo upinde guregista futi or saita nomu ku wenzagala njaye, ngia bon.
Hey, my name is Mpegelili, I am from Follcrust. So I have two questions that I would like to raise to the parliament. The first one is regarding, since now this bill, what I've heard, the bill covers, talks about the houses as well as the builders. But now, I have, we have already built our houses, so we have our houses. So are we covered from this bill? Because when we build our houses, we call someone, he came and built our houses. So it's already there as we speak now. So does this new bill cover even us who have already had houses? And the second one, it's about when I got an RTP houses, but later on I decided to demolish that houses and build a new one, my house now. So what about that? Does also this bill covers me even though I have already demolished the RTP and build a new one for myself? So that's my second question that I would like to know. If, should I also go back and register the builder as well as the house?
Sanbonani, ngakela uku bingelela i parlamente, ngibingelele nompaga tuase hartz bande uonke upelela. Mena ika malamu si zwe in tlabati from Likwa, Watfordin. Eh, ngia isapota ipili. Kotwa, ngakela uku ngesa logo, uku ti, kunezindu ezakiwa after ninety-four to nineteen ninety-nine. So lezo zinlu lezo, zina more than twenty years. Ezinyezazo, abaniga sbazo zange bakone, uku ti bazulu nsele zona, ngenga isim. Kotwa ke manje, uma sispega ezinyezazo ziyawa, ezinyezwi. Benkela, uku ti, parliament lipinde lbu yele ku lezindu, lislungise kabusha. Eh, ogunim, la eh hartz bande, si zunezwe izindawa ektywa ama plas. Lakhlala kona emiye, mpagati etu, eh, lalakona la South Africa. Engana zwe izinlu, benkela, uku ti, ne parliament lige lipega, lipega lesimulezo, libakeli nabu since banga bahlali, base South Africa. Loko uku shongo ba, amanywa lama plas, ama owners wa kona, awaseko, ashie lezo zakamisi, lapo kulelo plas. So siyazu kuti bakenge zinlu zotna. Siyazu kuti, uma kufira i kokula bayonakale, stela ke, i parlamente libakeli nabu babonelene, ngia bon.
My name is Sizwe in Tlabati, from Likwa, Watfordin. So there are two things that I would like to ask parliament to help us with. And the first one, it's about the RTP houses that was built between nineteen ninety-four up to nineteen ninety-nine. Those RTP houses have been there for more than twenty years now. So you can see the status of the houses now, the owners of the house were not able to renovate those houses. So we ask the parliament to help us now to come and assist with those houses, and come to renovate those houses for us. And the second thing now, there are people who still live under the farming area where the owner of those farms, some of them already passed away, but the people are still under those areas and they still live in the mud houses. So we ask the government, the parliament, to come and assist those people who still live under such condition.
Sanbonani, ngikala uku bingelela i parlamente, ngibingelela uongama kanse la zakona la, ngibingelela uongumpaga tuase hartz, siabo ngakaku, uktola etu ba eli njenga leli, eh, mena ipili ngia isapota ka ku, siabo ngangaayo. Nde, ningizotela ogu ngesa lapo, ngoba sesbonilo kuti, ku lomthetosayowayo, eh, abaniga zbezindu bavigelegi le futi, ku zo kinsalega kuti, imateriali sebenziswayo, yaka izindo ezis strong, ene nala bobo makinabo, baso beberi gistewa basiu. So owamege, engukela yo, ngia kela uku ti, engati besi ngasiswa, mayla nanenda ba, yesindu zama RTP, uku ti, ma ngamane kshawe umtheto, njenga la ma RTP, akina angapelanga. Isiakela uku ti, gumane, kwenziwe umtheto, ozo guazu klauliswa, ama main contractors. Ngoba ku yenze, utholu kuti, imain contractor, yapadarwa, pati, aisange isapa darama sapcontractors, ekuneni izindu zisale, singa pelanga, and esiniskatin, mpagati, minyu tholugu ti, watilizela, ninlu, ayokela kama kelewa, agasa, loku chelulindile, pele abo two years. Agwenze gi niks, so siba pusha kanjani ke, ukuze bazoguazu kuti, ifu nomsebenzo unfinished, bona bazo, bazo unigazo ama penalties, iloko, ngukela, ngia bon.
Thanks, ma'am. Go and register that ma kelewa nide. The name, the name of ma kelewa, who's, who was, who was sitting somewhere waiting for the house? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the parliament to come and be with us here. We really appreciate that you came and thank you so much. Um, now we understand that the bill will protect the consumers, the owners of the house, as well as the builders. So now we have an assurance that there are those people who will build the houses for us in future. There will be people who have been tested and now we understand that the quality will be high. So we appreciate first of all that. But now, we would like to ask the parliament to help, maybe to have a law or a legislation that will push the contractors. Because now there are RTP houses that are incomplete. They came and started to build, but it's not completed. So we ask please for, for, for the parliament to help with that so that they can push those to come and finish up what they have started.
Sanbonani, ngatanduk bingelela i parlamente, ngapamwetu eh, nompaga tu esnawo, la ngapagati, kanyene ekulisonke ekon. Eh, ika malame, Ngutasi, Colen Govende, ngisuka emkondo, wateti, ya isapota ipili. Eh, ngitanda, uku ba nombozo, puti, ngipinde, nama comment konada po. Eh, kunezindu ezakiwa like il, mabakala illepe, zotilepe, mabakala uwa kizindu, maybe bazake four years back. After four years back, ba ixiye kanjalo, be se kufira ufulume mlampe nzo tumusha, upinde kretiere lezo zinlu kale pans. From then lezo zinlu lezo, masi kretiwe. Be se sitola i garantie, emniaga mlampe, umaspa snika tuye zeka garantie. After detuma, umaspara awaseko eh, awkavanga umniga zweindu, ku lezo skatilesu. Emva wetu ye se ipelile, be se izindu yakala, iyakreka pans. And then motutio ibiga ninlu, ukthola galu kuti, ausakoni, uksizagala, ngalo kuti iskati, se garantie, se sipelile, kanti ninlu yona, islepe sayo, sesen emniaga eh shumi. Eh, be se uku ba, abantu abalisa izindu, eh, emniaga ba approve eh, maybe twenty fourteen until twenty twenty-two, loba approveile, pati zinlu banga kele. Eh, be se ke, uku ba ne kenga futi esnayo, izindu ezakelu azona, uma ngabe ama contractors basakeli zinlu, azimelani, nen dawo. Esisahlala guyo, nen imvula la ikamga ngakona. Anazu, nama bayakpega, inibo so contractor lezo kuti, ku lendawo le, imvula inningi, khamga mlampe ka west, or ga east. Be saktelo kuti, kube nomthetospegelela kuti, ma ngabe zogwa kiwa, sketla babu ge indawo, ku be kona inlela babuanga kuti. Ku lendawo, esizo ibega ku lezindu lezo, ngoba sitolo kuti, zinlenningi, ziwato amanzi, umnyango, upege lapo imvula la ikamga ngakona ka ku. Ma esengena amanzi, akina asabula lezindu, zotu umniga zaga sakoni futi, uku legelele. Eh, be se saktela uku ti, eh, basbugelelela, tina singa bahlali, sia legeleleka ka ku, uku ti kwa kele zinlu. Kotwa, saktina singa tholu, esiniskati zinlu, ngoba, una bandu, estala nabula, abana mapasa ngamabili, eh, South Africa, pinde naruli ya izwe. Utolugu ti se ibabasho mla ka ku, wenzula bahlali base South Africa. I thank you.
My name is Tasi Govende and I support the bill. Um, and we are happy with the bill, hopefully it will help us. I have a question as well as comment. Eh, there is a situation here where you find that the builders come into our area and start to build the houses, they will put the slab. And after four years, nothing has been done, at least for four years, then later on, they will start building and they will give you a guarantee for two years. But now, immediately after the house has been built, we'll start to notice the cracks on the walls. So now what will happen? They will tell you that your guarantee They will tell you that your guarantee time has elapsed, so you cannot claim anything. They don't check that the slab has already been there for more than four years. So that's the first thing that I would ask our parliament to help us with. And the second thing is regarding the approval. There are people who had been approved to get a house at least from two thousand and fourteen up to twenty twenty-two, but they haven't received their houses. But the approval was there. So that's the second thing also that we'll ask our parliament to help us. And the third one, is it possible for the inspectors to come first and look the area? How is it before before they build the house? Because you find that in our area always when it rains, the rain comes from east. But now if the if our doors face the east, then we'll have the problem. So can you ask also for the parliament to send the inspectors to come and see the area itself so that before they build, they decide how to build those houses? And lastly, there are people right now who possess two IDs. One maybe for South Africa and for another country. So those people, they benefit from this situation. So may we also ask the parliament to help us with those people who possess two IDs.
Thank you very much. Another ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine with the spot, ten. The the blue one. Don't come if I have not pointed you, please. Start.
Amolweni otin bingelele kala amalunge palamende pambele. Di bingelele no komisa enga ekonge we IFF kuino CIC uchuliasma lema. Ika malamde ngusporazi vumaninkala apa emtsugalewa e what seven. We accept that it is difficult to apply the bill to temporary buildings, structures forming part of informal settlement or shakes. However, the decision to exclude the application of the bill to structures that do not have their own bathroom or toilet is based on misguided Europeans, misconceptions of what qualifies as building. People in rural areas are billed differently to those in the city with land constraints. And therefore, they do not always build homes that have attached to the to them. A toilet and bathroom or even kitchen. Therefore, this exclusion must be removed from the bill and causing the avalanche.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you. Greetings to honourable members of the parliament and all protocol observed. We support the bill. Si siyamgeela. Ukuti guba konna izinmuna ba ezikona gugusachenziswa kwa lumtecho si fifiniwa. Si ngiamgeela ukuti guba konna izinmuna ba ezibakona kulumtecho si fifiniwa. Gogwakiwa weza kiwe zeskashana. Ika kuluga zigu zindawo zemichondo lo lapo wukona imiku. Izwe kunjalo isingumo so ukuti gunga bandaganya. Kulumtecho lezo zakiwu. Ngenda ba ukuti zona azichange nenama akuko ipathroom, nama i toilet. Ngapakati ngitabanga ukuti awona umkondo omusha lo ngoba umkondo wa labantu ababuya ngapalje Europe. Wenza ukuti ke gunga bandaganya lezo zakiwu. Abantu abathala emakaya buona bakangendla e chugi ile gunala ematulope. Ngenda ba yesinmuna ba zo ukuthola gala gomshaba. Ngakwage bengi isipegelele ukuti ge lezinlu ezakiwe. Ukupegelela ezinama toilet, nama bathroom, ngapakati nama i kishi. Ukuti ke gube iyo kupela imibande la e bugiswayo. Ingakwage sitrela je ukuti nama lezo zizo ezige ngitabanga ukuti gufanukuti zisuze kulumtecho si fifiniwa. Ngoba izo ogu izinmuna ba gubantu be etu kulumtecho si fifi.
Ngitala ngubingelela ipalamende no mpakati wa seharz. Ika malamukos ngakuma lo ngoyemkondo watetin. Okay, mina bengzolukuzo like ngaxukuti ngayi isapota ilo ngpindi ngitsang like ngenutral angakadisite ifungaxo. Cause ngayi ngubangi ngikenga like buti kuzo banee ifine ifever umaki arregistewa angakwakeli ngendla e up to standard or ngi quality like. So mina bengisukazukuti bazopokela kanchan labo bakila babarregistatukuti. Cause ngaxo kutumuntu ngayi afine ten thousand like. But uzo ekipaiin or uzo uzo konna inlu ukuti akonakui patara eofine apinda buyele alungisela puta alenzela apendla niyako in. Nomanjie sokuchast ukusho je ukutshasza ofaina. Ekpele ngala loganga la ndelewa ukuti nama faina yakoka opindu yabuya inlu umuntu olungisa nama puta wenzela lemufa or ekpele moyen. Bengtela ukuti ma ngabe wenziwe akupnensege ektenizindo velizen se yagenhela. Indaba ye yeyezindo ukuti tambe ngendla aibe ibesitreti kakulu. Cause abantu batad advantage most of the time umuntu nomanga buya miss a police station ekpele moyen ndaba yakon. Uyolandela la wena wulebe uyepoliceteshi batisasa ekintesengakusa ngayi. Wena obomo shakalele ukipimala kuwa ampatara watengi imetirale emva logo inliyawa or yavusa or whatever. So mina bengtela ukutigalele letenin ma ngabe umaki arregistat or abantu njabakaye ba ba fosterleleke ukuti baba registat konna ukuti nama umyombopoyo bope umuntu registat ozo pinda futha konut ayolungisa lelo puta. Gube imastu ukutabuyele alungis ngoba sesu ukutakipita ten thousand afine ekbelu nusela nshanga ewile oingasiza ngakabuya ngazo ilungis. Nga bon.
Thank you very much. I am not sure whether I support this bill or not. In fact, I think I'm neutral. The reason I'm saying this is because I hear here on the bill, we are talking about the penalty. So what I want to understand is regarding the enforcement. Like for instance, if someone has built a house which is not up to standard, let's say maybe he pays that ten thousand and what's going to happen there? Is he or she going to pay that fine? And then he's going to be he's going to rectify the damage which has been caused on the on the structure which he built. The problem here we have is regarding the application of the law. Because even in the existence of such laws, people still have problems. I am therefore pleading that we must do the right thing. And because the these builders take advantage of us. And when you go and report them to the police, you don't get any assistance. And you find that you have lost a lot of money. Because most of the time you find that the builders have done shoddy work. You find that there are maybe their house is leaking and and others like that which do not qualify as a good standard. So I think that it must be compulsory for those builders to be registered so that we can so that the consumers can have recourse in case of shoddy work. Thank you very much.
Nde layo. Umthabu ngubingelela ngubingelela ipalamende ele lumphakati wonge. Let's show kulu bayo e what fourteen. E watetin emtsugaleka. Nga isegela i thousand bill ne. Ngitela ukuti sibese sibugana nawo ama pointe nzo washola i two.
For many years, the home building construction sector has been dominated and continues to be dominated by few whites together with NHRBC. The registration requirements appear fair, but the practical implications of the stringent requirements may be used to exclude entrant home builders who are mostly backup contractors. The use of the surplus of the home warranty fund to finance transformation measures in the industry must clearly specify that some of the funds will be used to assist black entrants with registration and this must be reported on annually. Failure to address clearly how the legislation will ensure that it supports the entrance of black contractors and transform the industry will only serve to create a white-owned industry presented as a way to protect homeowners. I thank you.
Greetings to everyone. My apologies that I did not get the name of the speaker. Ukuluma la ngoguti eminyageni emi nama sogiminyaga emine ngilemboni. Ye zogwakiwa wezinlu kulumkakwa weziinlu. Ipethwe abantu abamchope abayinlanzana kanyee ne NHRBC. Izimfunea kozoko balisa ukufanilo ukuti ge ziguiegezwe. Gube konna izinyatelo ezichachoayo ezinala. Ukunsegi se ukuti ke gunga gubanda ganywa wa bakai zinlu. Oguyibo abasa fufusa oguyibo na eskatin esningi. Abenze emisebenzi ya sokontlaka abakulu. Ogunye futhi ukuti ukusachenziswa kwa lezo smali kuleso sikwama esbizo ukuti home warranty fund. Ukuthasa izinyatelo zo kuhlalewa kabusha kulemboni. Ukufanilo ukuti kukubanagane kutathwe ukusachenziswa kwa lezo smali ukuti kusizwe. Abomtabu abangena kulemboni bapawazukuti bapalisa kandufuthi lo ukufanukuti ke gubigwe. Unyaga unyaga nuñak. Ukuhlaleka ukupegelela ngogusobala ukutilomsebenzi nama ukutilomtecho. Ukunsegi se ukusegela. Ukubakona kozokontlaka abantu ndu. Ukuse kuhlaleka ngilemboni gunga pegelwa je ukuti kutukugezwe ukupegelela. Abaniga nama abakai zinlu abamchope kulemboni. Kotoa ke lumtecho uufela senkati kuzo vigera abanini bezinlu. Nga bon.
Bingelela umkandlu no mpakati wonge. Ika malami Ufus Kumalo bangazungostics khamga Likuwa e watetin. Bengtela umkandlu ngayi 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 ngayi
Nga bingelela no mpakati bingelela bonkupholi obkona nklini. Ika malambo ngiwé wakashezi bon khamgistanatoni e what twelve. Nga ivuma ipil ngayi isegela kakulu ngoba sesozosa velegia bonakalut ngpela abantabakarabine zinlu ukuse benamthandje. Putigi azalo abantu every day bayakula vele zinlu sozolosisding. Lana ngisi nenkingage masekuzangala ma RDP ma eseyakiwek. Seifigileginzozo. Kia be se benefita. Nomanga twia benefiting ngidje ifeli tholwe umuntu onaxali kuleo indawo leo. Uxala wenyin mchamshalekulu. Atol eseninlu la elekshinle tu la enaxalikon. Kupele eminyaga neminyaga enga isebenzisi leo nju leo. Rentise kuyiputuke wakuluma ngendaba ukrentise. Nzo wenzanjisbonel ngomonye waba rentayo. Ngenga yokswelinda woba ngale eskati leseksakiwa ma RDP. Mina nganga kwalifyo banaye RDP. Sa se yingane ngalesu skati. So ngenga yokswela makambisakati baba na washia inasenzela ngalutoki. Skwabona kalukuti pelasisizu xalepanle si yingane umaga zipanilenzanjani ngati. So sa tholasesirenda almost close to ten years manje. Slusia renta one point five eklo RDP. Loyo umuntu loyoma sitisiamjalu te trastlagegile glenyanga le atretnisha ukuskipa. So endakaxali klo indawo laga lapo standatoni uxlala wenyinindawo batu ne RDP. Itaitela asmaz no munalo nama ganalo na kosaravelinalo. Masesit vesa gesbontinga ngpela yakind. Cause we've heard ukuti inkanpanile yosuke yakia izinlu. Ukutholo ukuti mchambisinla fandala zakiwegalelo logishi mchambesu forendre tingenzisbonel. Beseyaka mchambesinhasbeo extra mchambi ngaten. Gube konanjeslinga esngana umuntu zinlu. Lezo besetluti mchambesgesbonalelele abantu ngpela basitingayo izinlu. Kungavile kamgumuntu nje se onala ma RDP law. Ukona abantabaxalakilo indawo ngpela basitingayo izinlu. Nga bon.
Thank you very much. My name is Bonngiwe Shesi. Greetings to the committee and all protocol observed. I do support this bill because it seems like the communities are going to benefit. What I would like to raise is that the as we are experiencing population growth, I think that that aspect must be considered. And we also must look at who benefits from these houses. Because you find that there are others who are beneficiaries of these houses and they use them for business to rent, to rent them out. Like I'm also renting. And because at the time when the list was made, I did not qualify because I was still young at the time. And after my father passed on, we had a problem, a challenge at home and my mother did not know what to do. We are renting an RDP house for one thousand five hundred rand. And when we do not have that money, when we explain to our landlord, to the person who is renting out this house to us, he will threaten us to say that he will take us out from, he will evict us from that house. And that person does not stay in our village. He comes from another place. And when we say he must take out the title deed, he doesn't want to show us that title deed. So I am asking this committee to look into such issues. Because sometimes you find that when the company maybe is assigned to build four hundred houses, maybe they build extra ten. I think those should be given to the people who really need those houses, especially the locals, people who stay from those communities instead of those housing houses being occupied by people who do not come from that locality.
Nga bon. Nga bingelela ipalamende le tu nabakulbonge obkona ngapakati. Ika malambo malikwa wakashtaku. Ngitamga konna epixli e what nine itakakral. Bingelele na bobonge intlangano eskonanga ngapakati. Nga isapota ipil. Bengzatela emnyangwe nwezezziinlu ukutimchampi mokabonelela ektenini. Emtecho eni okona. Ugo ti mthampembo ngabonalela ektenini, emtechuenu okona. Baye epixse se ga xelenda, ba ugo ti mthampi, omundo mta la makapalisa RTP. Assebenzisi omzuku, i difgate zumzukulua kenoma, ini kos logo wenzza. La ba zukulu, baba ntsakalise se ba kibe la pezwa la abantu abatala. Ntsampi se ba ba sugumeza, ngogo ti ba tbona, ba ni access blizinju. Ba cha cha ngastilezinju, lesa ezabo, kanti mthampeni issebenzela into etise. Ekteni mthampi nbusukutlu omtatala, oxala noban lapu. Menga, ugo ti mthampi, na logo, okuso wenzza, ugo ti mthampi mina ngukoko. Mangpalsa into RTP, ngena ugo ti nyakualfa, ngessebenzi omzukuluan. Gu, gu, gumina, ugo ti mthampi masenha bilim saben, lendru omzukuluan. Kanti mina bingtin kanda ikaya lagi ti. Nkela gutate futina logo, neskatu sel. Ngoba ya ekthola kale, abanye, abasukulba ngasakonu, ugo tban gene. Egwenzza, ntsampi imsebenzisi nju konala po glelo kaya. Nengayoku, uko kuwa atoka, omzukulotisa, mthampi ngobe difgate. Ngaleskatile sukpaliso, guzukutu oxala noban. Bese se nyakela futu ugo tigena ke, ulama RTP houses akiwana apambili, nignaga biliskat sa manje. Yes, beste ngagavula, meh, ugo ti snutis, ugo ti, uno ro, uno raite okon. Skelu ugo ti nispegelela, futiglesos nju leso, ngoba, utola kuwia RTP house. Ba itmochela ngaparati, ma guna impula kene amans. Guba i challenge logo, gumdu omta la, ona kon, kutawase ngasi mendia, pindi I plus. Kos vele, ayintis konla, ugo tu kaso, kaso, lo mo ndu onge namanje. Gotama so kwenye lagleso, simo goya slimaza kakulu. Og, ogu nyefuti, ngosam, nyakolisa mama, tskatiste kakulu. Unendawo le, ita hakrali, eh, sumerso.
No, no, ma, go and register that thing. Because if I give you extra, they will say you have given other people extra. Nam, give me extra.
I'm so sorry, ntsatolu mthulisa ngapamko, guba.
Ah, ah, go, utulusa lapu ma. Eh. Go and register thema.
My name is Mali Kwa Zipaku. I, eh, my greetings and all protocol observed. I support this bill. Eh, what I'm asking is for the human settlement department eh, to look into this issue of eh, old people eh, when they go to eh, register for RTP houses. They use their grandchildren's certificate. Eh, I think that sometimes gives eh, problems. Eh, because eh, sometimes you find that there are other grandchildren and, but the grandmother has chosen this particular grandchild. And when their grandmother passes on, it becomes a problem. Like when there are other grandchildren, you find that they are not, or they cannot access eh, that house. So, I'm seeking clarity on that point. Eh, because you find that the grandmother has chosen a particular grandchild because eh, he or she was staying with eh, with that child. Eh, and eh, those, that child, that grandchild maybe thinks that eh, eh, she's got the right to exclude others. And eh, another issue is regarding these RTP houses which are built eh, or which were built previously, eh, which are not up to standard. Because I think that the builders have done shoddy work. You find that eh, the, the, the houses are leaking and it becomes a challenge to the eh, old people who are staying there. Because subsidy is aimed as an intervention to assist those who eh, who are in need. But you find that there are other, there are people who try to eh, take advantage of eh, that situation. Thank you very much.
Eh, mbingelela iprotokolo, ngoglandila na kwayo. Um, Boni Tuba, Sonto Shabalala, from standatonli, kwa, eh, wat three. Last name challenge is na yo, ma RTP. Ma RTP challenge is na yo, ugo ti, kasha abasukontrak, ekmasibala, etuzanina. Abanya badeng, ba kama ngekte. And eh, le five years late, it no mingaga pele, RTP magnigazi problem. Kamaspari bati, angikinto abangatsiza ngayo, koz oso kontrak, uhabile, ubuye le move. Bese na stelo soguti, stelu ugo tu, bo sokontrak, bakale kula ba, esakela nena, bo ugo ti. Nama snengi, naskonu ugo ti, sibuye le gubo, andesizo, kela futu kupa lamende. Si sakala ugo ti, isenzele, ikomi ti, lo ugo ti. Jalo, izo konu, moni ta izinju, ngaga pele five years, koz amanja abantawali ngan. Lama RTP esala guo, slala, pumamans ngapans, inlu ya fus, eh, ya kreta, ngaga pele five years. And agu kola, uzo reporter, kon tholo sizo, agu kola, ba ngakasa ngago. Stelu ugo tu, kupa lamende, ibe nati, snakri, no ugo ti, mtskulume namthandje, ibe se tuzanina, tiso konu ugo ze, ikala zo ze, tu siabon.
Eh, thank you very much, my name is Sonto Shabalala. Eh, my concern is that, or the challenges we have is that eh, most of the time eh, the contractors who are procured to build these houses are contractors eh, who come from outside eh, the, that locality. And eh, the, the challenge that we have, you find that eh, even before eh, five years, oh, within five years, you find that eh, you have the eh, problems of eh, structural eh, ineffici, deficiencies eh, in those buildings. And we do not have recourse in such a situation. Eh, because eh, when we go to the municipality to report, eh, we are told that no, the contractor eh, is no longer around here. He has gone back to where he is, he or she is based. So, I'm asking eh, parliament to look into those issues eh, to, for the municipality to procure eh, the contractors in that locality. So that when there are problems eh, they can be liable for eh, those eh, deficiencies. Eh, because most of that, or, and we are also asking the parliament to have a committee that will come and monitor eh, the quality of those houses. Because sometimes you find that eh, those houses are built in eh, dolomatic eh, land and the wa, the water comes from eh, underground and eh, further causing damage to, to the structure. And eh, when we go and report that to the municipality, we don't get any help and we are not assisted in any way. So, that is my humble plea eh, for that to be considered. Thank you.
Namen thanduk bingelela iparameende. Eh, nyayisapota ipili, gotwa ge. Eh, u, u kulu, nyakabanga, bibasa kshi, lo gotwa. Namen mfunuksapota kakulu le issue ye komi itekmeli monetary amasap contractor sakashwa. Ipa lamende estela, i, i bugelela kakulu, la masap contractor kashwa ugo sakela kli five years. Ngoba, bayasakela ma RTP, ma pele, ifo, ugi vinigitele kontrak tibale. Si zo esbati ya amakansela nama RTP outen, awatingisa. Siya kela ugo ti, paramente ispegelela, kula ma official. Enenwa bo pefu ugo ti, ngoba, ama official eh, tunau, adala nga. Ya ma RTP ayakiwa, angafige, abantu ina abarati, atengselwa, abantu already, abani mali, futbanizi. Kanti tina si, si lindi development, uthola silwa sodwe makaya. Si lili singaba fuwe tu si five, nline yodo. Skule uktulizi, tu apla es ngaituli. Ixen kuule ispegene na yo, siya kela ge, paramente. Ugo ti, leo komitenzo ikok. Ayegibugelela ekteni, kla masap district, ilawa, eslala guo, jenga menbu ye kavenpi. Mara le issue ah, abo zagui, tabaitkazayo, sonke ispegene na yo, ya masap contractor fikake, angakre. Ena be ka baba holda accountebuli lapo. Masitisi abuza, ba zo sijela, uti kobwe ku province. Tinaslule ge, ku masap district ukuluma nabu, abantu, akmeleba pegelela, tina iklali. Siya nke la ge, paramente, nisbugelela glyo nda. Oh, udisemba, waga xalajwa, ekovenpi.
Eh, thank you, eh, greetings, all protocol observed. Eh, I support the bill. And eh, I also support the proposal eh, that the parliament must establish a committee which is going to monitor the work of these subcontractors. Eh, because we are also facing a similar eh, problem, eh, challenge where I come from at eh, govern mbeki. Because eh, the, they will, before, in fact, before they even finish with their building project of those houses, you will hear eh, the councillor saying eh, they are, they are selling houses. Eh, which I think it is not allowed. I am pleading with the parliament to arrest those eh, officials who are selling these eh, RTP houses. Who are selling these eh, RTP houses. Because there are people who are in need of those houses. But you find that eh, the officials are, are selling those houses. That is why I'm eh, also eh, supporting this eh, proposal eh, for the parliament to form this committee eh, to monitor eh, various, different districts. Because eh, even where I come from, we have such a problem. And when we go to the municipality to eh, lay complaint or to make inquiries about eh, those subcontractors, eh, we are referred to the province. And eh, hence I'm pleading with the parliament eh, to have that committee which will be eh, which will do work in eh, various district. Eh, that is my humble plea.
Angatelle tuwa, eh, mbingelela iparameende. Eh, ngeka ma mina ngomzwa ke, waga Shabalala, kama edipalisin, eh, wat six. Eh, ipili nyayisapota kakulu. Eh, nyakabango ugo ti, ni, yo inlela, izosipa inlela, egahli ugo ti. Eh, awasakelayo, benze ga ahli futi. Ule zinzu omkaso, spines thole, iqualiti guzo, nyayisapota kakulu ipili. So, na di kenbi, eh, implemente eh, use neskati, ugo ze eh, ngoba izinzu ya truvia kazi, ya kiwa wima je. Ugo ze mthambeden, swazukthola, ya kwalite, ezobakona, ugo ze swazukutu, esisi zagali kakulu, siomparati. Eh, zothandu ugo ti mthambeden, ngenge, mbeki singa, ngendele ugo ti. Eh, in order for ama builders to register. Nkela ugo ti, iparamente, isbugelela, ngendele ugo ti, gubeni system. Ezoguazukutu, iwe accessible to everyone. Because of manje, izinju izinzu zinzuwa online kakulu. Only to find ugo ti, some of the people se bakulile and it's not easy for them to understand, lesinzu zogu register, gubo online. In order ugo ti mthambeden, baguazu guregistera, baguazu kina basebenz. Ngendele ngibuwa ngakona, ezoba, negative impact guyo. Eh, when it comes to economy, eh, uzo tina sokomula kakulu, labantu lava, abachi banemali. Oguma main contractors, lava abaki, lava abasa, abassebenzira, abangena ma kampan. Aga ngaba sawazukutu, ba thole omsewez, ngendele eh, right. Because of guzo besoktu, minicha kakulu, lava abanemali, nawana ma access, oguma computer. Zonke lenja, yo ugo ti, baguazu, ba register. So, that's my plea, nyakela kakulu ugo ti. Isbugelela ugo ti, thole, na ibakona eh, eh, locally so, ugo ti, abantu, baguazu ugo ti, ba register. Baguazu ugo ti nabu, basneze, islevi, eh, right, ne kwalite, ezobonaka, nyabo.
Eh, thank you, eh, my name is Mzwa Ke Shabalala. All protocol observed, I do support this bill. Eh, what I like to emphasize is that eh, I think we are going to benefit from eh, this bill. Because eh, eh, the, the officials are now, now going to start to do the right thing. And we are also going to benefit in terms of eh, quality. Eh, my, I also ask that the, eh, eh, that this must be implemented timously. So that it benefits eh, the, the, the community at large. And secondly, eh, we, as, this bill speaks about eh, registering of the home builders. I think if, once we start this system, it has to be accessible to all people. Because currently eh, we are told that they have to register online. And I think this is eh, to the exclusion of others, especially the elderly in our communities. Because they cannot access eh, or rather, they are not able to eh, register online as they do not understand eh, that eh, technology. So, I think that this is going to have an impact eh, in that only the rich contractors are going to benefit eh, because they have access. Eh, and the new entrants into the market, which are mainly black people, are not going to get access to this. And this, and as a result, they, if they do not get to work, they are not going to employ people from around and create job opportunities. That is why I am making a humble plea that such committee which going to monitor, they must be based locally. Thank you.
Proceed, ma.
Rambona, nyabingelela la, paramente. Ya bulaga, vi paramente, ma epigirela sa, ukonu, uthola izinju, ikutala sa, thola. Minangu Jonaswa, kambazalala. Jonas Mbazalala, kama uga eh, eweselutoni, eweselutoni. Marekaya ku, ekaya, ngokzalo, ngzalo, eh, eh, northwest. Lana, since gapalisinju, two thousand and one. Mangiyaga masparatu, masparatu, ngjeru ugo ti. Ika madame, li koni, pitu, riku, pi, kupi, ma. Indu namanja, kaka itula, ngazo, nkinga, ya konna, yini. Singina sixty-six years eh, manje, lo, nyagalo. Ya bo.
Um, Baba.
Baba.
Uh, shtabliak. Go and register them.
Eh, my name is Jonas Mbandalala. Eh, I only have one concern, or a question of clarity because I have registered in, on the list eh, in twenty oh one. Eh, but to this day, I haven't received a house. And every time when I go to make some inquiries, I do not get any, any clarity. I, I'm sixty-six years old now and I still do not have a house.
Eh, nyabingelela, eh, guba, bonke, bapache, paramente. Minangso ala, gu one, three, eweselutoni, eh, gumsuka likwa. Ika madame, ngbegithe, bawaljulu. Eh, gobil, ye gongsukumisaya, xigune, eh, i, ipili, e begiwe lena noya, nyayimugela. Gotwa, ngidje, ugo ti, nisviso lele, kuna wiboza, ngoba, ngasa sonke skati, maso palisa. Uthola ugo tu ya palisa, yengal minu imsebenzi, yesu imsebenzayo, si imsebenzako ma kontrak. Uthola ugo tu, nigeza, i kontrak for three years. Ungenza, ngisisikati, oxale mo dantries. Uthola ugo ti, ya palisa, ngalesu eskatu, wena, usato, usabambile, lotries, kselu, nyagoywani, uthuya ya, uyopalisa. Batu wena, lomsebenzo, wenzayo, awqualify, ugo tu ngathola ilju. Kanti uselu, lo nyagoywani, ugo ti, eh, leo kontrakipeli. Nkela na yo, lo, ngomnak amendwa, baybuge ilgele ya konna. Ugo ti, every time, ngoba, siti, masitisia velas, yopalisa, ktiwa, no, wena, ngobu sasebenza. Awazukutu omula, utholo ugo tu, kwa wena, ngega ukone, ugo zakela. Gubnzi makakuulu, ewxala, empagatini, uyati volopa, ngoba, wena, zoskati, ngeltohola, bambile, so valele ngapandle. O, wesbili. Ngalendela, ugo ti, umnoto wetu, uyachinja chinja, ngayo, ngasosonke eskati. Lo wa amendwa, ngalesa eskati, ugo ti, uf, omundo achola eh, ngapezu, luwa three thousand five hundred. Eh, loyomu ndu, loyoo, ufanile, anaxomuli, gomkaso wa hulmende. Ananzi pegelela, kandiani, leon daba, ngoba, ngbona, mina, umnoto, ngasosonke eskati, ma uchinja. If, eskatis, pila giso, ohola five thousand five hundred. Anka ba, ugo tu, ngakona, kuaka ilju, le, ngaknigas tunzi nawe. Ngapandle, ugo tu, kina, waka, lukovana, ugo tu, manufitla, intlogo. Minabengela, omtechoe, paramente, ma amendya. Oh, ngasosonke eskati, kukaze, tima uchinja. Ngamane, uchinja neskatu, ubuwe ugo ti. Umnoto, ukuula uchini, ngoba, ilju, ngaitenga, eighty thousand. But if uitengsa, after ten thousand, ngego itengisa, eighty thousand. Isu kichinci ile, because of uchinja gua umnoto. Nyakabanga, nagulizinju zam RTP, lesi klo muuwa ya, ugo ti, ngoglo kaso. Naga bahampe, ba uchinja, nanga be, ba ubega omtecho. Baybuge na leonjeela, yo ugo ti, la bes, me, omtecho, bes ubegile, ngon ninety-four. Ugo tu, omuto, klo mlayo, omuto, sugele malinengaga. Gut, ngasosonke eskati, na konna, bakbuge eskati, liseski so. O, wesbili.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eh, thank you very much, eh, my name is Begitamba Mjuli. I support the bill. Eh, what I'm, eh, I'm going to make a humble request here, or, or ask a, a question. Because eh, the problem is when you go and register eh, to be a beneficiary of eh, subsidized houses or the RTP. Eh, let's. Let's say, for instance, at that time, I am working. And we are working on contract basis. And maybe the contract is for three years. And when I go to register as a beneficiary, we are told that no, you are working. You therefore do not qualify to register for an RTP house. And at that point, you find that you only have one year left before your contract expires. But you will be told that you are still working and on that basis, we are excluded. And the other point is that since the economic situation keep on changing, I think when the amendments are made, such has to be considered. Let's say, like, for instance, previously, it was said that if you earn 3,500, you cannot be a beneficiary of any, you cannot be a beneficiary of any programs of the government. But I think that things have changed now. The economic situation has changed. Even now, today, if you earn 5,500 per month, for instance, you are, you cannot be able to build a decent house for your family. You can only afford to build a small, a small house for you to sleep with the family. So I'm saying that when the amendments are made, please consider the economic factors when, when we register for these RTP houses. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another 10. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. We're talking about the bill. Don't forget to mention your name and indicate whether you second or you reject the bill. Number one, 3 minutes, don't forget.
Good evening.
Those people who are going out, where are they going? Transport will not leave you. Please don't panic. Those that have been brought by parliament transport, it will wait for you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tabo Tolo from Governor Begi, Ward 7. I hear that you've mentioned that there will be job creation in this thing. So my point will be, the parliament, or my request to the parliament is that, can you please search for all these subcontractors to hire young people and, and not outsiders? Because the problem that we, we had is that every time the people that are given work, they only think of saving than finishing the job. That's why their job are not always finished because it's all about them. If they are not negotiating well with whoever that they've hired, that's the biggest problem firstly, that makes all the contractors not to finish their job. So our plea, especially my plea, is that the parliament must check in terms of the young people are being hired and especially South African. I thank you.
I'm going to. 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 Let's go to the end. I'm going to. 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 Is in the quality of the business. I'm going to. 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 I'm going to.
Yeah. Sanbonani. Again, I'm going to. Program director. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Parliament, the stakeholders, I invite to a meeting. So I'm going to. I'm going to. Second, if you know, fine. Parliament, I implement. It's a little. I'm going to. I want to. Program director. I'm going to. 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 Eh, eh. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. RTP houses with government. Due to our reason. I want to. I want to. Our department, our contractors, my spare, total appointed. The relevant stakeholders, which are with committee, city, they lose, are both involved. I'm going to. 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 In king, I'm going to. Government here tonight. I'm going to. 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 So I tell you, I'm going forward. Again, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Seven, as seconds, seven, let's catch it. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. On a speaking, I'm going to. Politic, I'm going to. I'm going to. Eh, 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 government. On a speaking, I'm going to. I'm going to. 2006, if my, the former president, UTM, I let a bomb as part of my provinces. From there, from there, from man. Since, since he far as London, I'm going to. 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 As his eyes, he's on the level always. I'm going to. And it's in a, as he, my office agent, our host, now, as I you. As Stalin pants, now, my program, now, my project, the government, so I'm on it. I'm seven, so it will look us catch it. I'm going to. Program director.
Thank you.
I'm going to. Program director. I'm going to. I'm going to. Eh, this is so okay. I'm going to. They love sharing every day. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I think it's hotel. Before my election, it's a water. In my office, in a relevant, I'm going to. 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 So I propose, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Even today, I'm going to.
Can you go and register them there, Baba?
First of all, greetings to the program director, to everyone here, to all stakeholders. Greetings to you all. I support and the bill. My name is Bafana Msiabi. And one thing that I would like to emphasize is that when we talk about subcontractors that are being hired, it is important to include all relevant stakeholders of the government. We shouldn't come only when there is a problem. So we should be involved initially, at the initial stage, we should be there. And secondly, there must be someone who is monitoring or doing a follow-up to see that the decisions that have been taken are being implemented. So that can also help. So now, lastly, when I want to mention that there are houses, around 10 houses, those houses are for people who are disabled. Because of load shedding, those houses were banned. So we applied for RTP houses, but up to so far, we haven't heard anything. So that's also our request to please help those 10 houses that were banned because of load shedding that we are currently experiencing. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Siabong Ankosie from Ward 1. And I support the bill. Just two things briefly that I would like to ask the parliament to help us with. Where I come from, many of these RTP houses are built on top of the water. And we have pleaded and asked the government to please remove those people who are staying there. But so far, we haven't received anything. So we ask you to please help us with that. And at the same time, there are houses, actually, it's not the houses, it was built only the slabs. So nothing has been done since then. So we also asked the government to follow up on that one and assist that those houses should be completed. Thank you.
I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Eh, Ward 6. I'm going to. 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 Tina, I think I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Close to 15 years, seeing to the RTPs. In king, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. And I, I'm going to. Years to 16 years, but I'm going to. Then I want to. I'm going to. Is it? I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Then I'm going to. Government. I'm going to. 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 And I'm going to. 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 But government, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Is it? I'm going to. I'm going to. To 90 or 70 or in. I got that enjoy it. I'm going to. 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 Grant. I'm going to. I'm going to.
Thank you. My name is Tandy May from the Paliseng Subregion, Ward number 6. And I support the bill. And I think it is something that will take us forward if we follow it. So I'm so happy with that. I think now, for more than 15 years in our area, we don't have RTP houses. But there was an open area and some people decided to use that area to build their houses. But now, there is no infrastructure in that area. So we just plead to you, government, please assist those people. They don't have water in that area. And when they ask water, they are being told that that area was not meant for houses. So but please, if you can just assist those people. So it's good to see when we see on TV an elderly person receive a house. We appreciate that. And but now, we want to ask the government, please, to make sure that you implement expectatiously that process to help people who, who are elderly. And it's, it's, it's not good to get a house at the age of 85 only to find that you will stay there for two years. So now, if government can help us with that, that can be so, I mean, it can help us a lot. So we humbly ask the government to help us with that, as well as job opportunities. If the government can come and see people around the area, especially the young ones, and just to check if they have the, the, the houses. And if they don't have, if government can help them, that can, can be much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the parliament for taking their time and come to be with us here. And we really appreciate that. And now, this gives me hope that we'll get the houses and that's what we are looking forward to. But now, another thing that is so important, it's the monitoring of this process. Because now, when municipality give, got the approval for, for the houses, you must make sure that the beneficiaries shouldn't be only the people who live in urban areas. This must go down to us in the rural areas. We also need to benefit in the rural areas. We also need to benefit in the rural areas. Now, after this bill, we hope that we'll get a quality houses that will last long. And we are looking forward to that. But another thing, in our areas, we have people who are skilled when it comes to building houses, but they are not registered. So that's the problem right now we have. The subcontractor will come from far away and build the house and the house will not last long. Then we have a problem. So now, if the government can help us to assist those people who are skilled among us in our area so that we can benefit. If we have a problem with the house, it's easy. We can just reach to them because they are with us here. Thank you.
Sambunan. Ngitandu bingelela ipalame nde nabaho libonga abakona ngaparat. Kama lami nguvuse wakakuwibu ngibuya ward fourteen morkenzon. Niopasisa umteeto obegi. Ngithanda okela la ipalame nde lisbugel. Endawenla ngibuya kon. Nama RTP akiwa lawakiwa ngabo ninety-four, one ninety-nine. Lapaya na kune problem abantu. They just bapa lisa banya banti zinlu. Badbe banga nasitingose zinlu. Watukuta abantu banya ba theli lapaezinklin. Bazee bahaka abantu banyazinklin. Abanyebaniga banti zinlu like. Bad back then selalalentlin. Ngoba gneskatesite. Umuntu nasashona, umuntu extendile inu xelkona. Babuya abantu anabamki babatindi amamale. Eni nabantu ba theli zinklin lapo. Amatajitita wa bisbona. Asa zukuti fanesenzenjan. Ngoba ba theli zinklin. Baniguwa wasangu banke ngenge. Banke ngenge ngeleraite zinklin. Bad maye, bane problem. Ngoba nagaafala abantu abake bazoo mkipesinklin. Maye ngakela ukuti klo umteeto musha. Ipalame nde lisbugelele kuti. Gube ne committee elzo cheka abantu kuti lo uyayfuna inlu na uyayune stingo sen. Ngoba baye ba applya inlu tholo kuti agana stingo. It's just applying for the second apply. Nasaitoli inlu usheli guyo. Gube na umteeto bekuwa kuti inlu na uyitholi sini geza six months. Uvungeni of saythatasinigo muymu. Ngiabo.
Thank you. My name is Vusikwebu from Ward fourteen. So now, in our area where I come from, there are RTP houses that were built from nineteen ninety-four. And some of the people who benefited from those houses are people really who don't need the houses. And you find that some of them, they even sold those houses. And those people who occupied since then those houses, they've extended the houses now. The houses are good. But now, the problem starts when the owner of that houses passes away. So the children will come now and evict you from that houses. So now, this is the problem that we have. We have the houses, we stay in the houses, but we don't have the title deed, it's not in our names. So we ask the government to please help us with that. If possible, if they can form a committee that will monitor this, I think this will help. Because we occupy those houses legally. But now, when someone dies, the problem starts. So we ask please for the parliament to help us regarding that. Thank you.
Sambunan. Ika malami ngusipogusha ngakantho. We are Four Crust, etokta Pixley, Isakaga Seme. Amen. Ngitandu kuti mina o ipili ngia isapota kakulu futi. Eh, ngitandu kutuhulmenaspegelagona indaba yomnyaga. Eh, besetel kutuhulmenaspegelinda yomnyaga. Ngoba ngwenze kutu palisela inlu bakjel kuti auqualify ngayomnyaga. Kotwa bengtrela baspegeli isimo omuntu sugue qualify ngapaskwas. Ngoba ngegu sugue sugue ofunilo ngaje uvu nganastingo sa. Yanzeka kala omuntu sitalika siba uteni. Utoguti sitala inlu ngakoko. Ogushu kuti siyatin kuti spinde safugi. Population isugese iningla. Ogu nyeh ezinlu. Mina ngitala e endawenituzese sky. Ezinlu zakone sky zakiwango ninety-seven. And ezinyezazo azekusme nso kutabanga kolupila ngapaskwas. So bengtela ukutuhulmenaspegelinda indaba eska kuti masakambeskatesite bapinde bazoo slungseli zinlu. Kune indawo konala po e indala abantu ba theli lakona ezinlu. Nabanti zinle zapitiga abanga sayinagilo maspara. Maspara kaslegere ngalo. So besetel uhulmen ukuti magune indawo ezinchha. E ivuliwe kuti gofago ezintze ezinchha. Bapinde bakala babuye le move abao fagela laba abantu lezo ezinlu. Sbiegliya ma contractors. Besetel ukuti bascheckel ukuti labantu laba abaswosiza okusakeli zinlu. They are qualified yini. Nomaba pegu kuti umsebenza sebe wenzile before. Usaseyera yini. Ngoba egwenze galayo. Appoint abantu abazoo usatimali pele. Kotu umsebenzo abo unegomush. So besetel kuti spegelale na lapo. Ngiabo.
Thank you. My name is Sipo Gulyendovu from Four Crust under Pixley Gaseme Municipality. So the first thing that I would like to put in front of us, it's regarding age when you apply for an RTP house. So instead of just looking for the age, I think the government now must look the reason behind. Why do I ask, why do I register for RTP house? Because you find that we stay in the house, we are ten in the same house. So that pushed me now to register for an RTP house. So now, this matter of age should also be reviewed and must be looked upon it to see what is the reason behind for if I don't qualify due to age. And secondly, there are houses in our area that was built around nineteen ninety-seven. And really, they are not conducive for people to stay inside them. And some of them are right now were banned over the years. Some are deteriorating. So the structures are not good. So before the government start to build the new ones, they must go back to review what they have done in the past and see what, how can they help those people. And lastly, is regarding the matter of subcontractors that has been emphasized in this discussion. Those subcontractors, they must be some inspector to check their past record, what they did in the past so that they can qualify to build another houses. Because some of them, they are there just for money. So in order to avoid that, there must be someone who will inspect them to make sure that they will build a quality house. Thank you.
Sambunan. Mina ngufansile wakavuntla eh, Vakastrom, Ward five. Eh, nsukuma no konga ukutinamchala siso tibana leipalame nde. Nginenkinga, nginentlu klesinle snefoyezesa kiwe. Ezinlu leze zakiwesnefoyezi zianeta. Oma ngabe izululina. Amanze ayakeleze zeso ngapagati. Ezinye senzamarin, rin, emirin. Eni amawinda konawavale giga ayakake. So, kune abantu ana abango nineteen ninety-two. Ngikalukuza gibo kuti bona. Ngenzeka yinukuti banga ikonu ukpalisa ezinlu. Kozla abantu ana laba abango ninety-two. Seven mandeni naboba nabantu ana ngowabo. And then futi nginoko ko omdhala sinse kwa thala wakiwa ama RTP. Agakaza itoli RTP. Uhlala mkukwin. Malina izulu ukokumthole ehlele skujin ekotom. Agaitoli RTP nanamchala lo kusafuni RTP. Nestelo salogo ngenge mangato la lo kokki RTP. Ngia chabule moyo namia bon.
Hambobalisa uka malakok. Not those one of nineteen ninety-two. Uka malakok.
Thank you. My name is Fanisile Lu Vunla. I'm from Vakstrom. And thank you for the parliament to come and be with us today here. We really appreciate that. We, the problem we have in our area is that we have houses, RTP houses, that were built four years ago. But now, they are leaking. When it's raining, the houses leaking everywhere. You can even see the marks on the wall. The ceiling is falling, the windows, you cannot close them properly. So we need help with those houses. So that's the first thing that we ask you as a parliament to help us please with. And we have children who were born in nineteen ninety-two. So I would like to know if those children can apply. Because those children now, they have their own families. So please, you may want also to consider that. And there is this one old lady, you know. She stays in the shack and when it's raining, she can't even sleep. She must sit on something in order to avoid rain. So is it possible to help that old lady to get an RTP house? She is very old, she needs the house. So may I please ask, please parliament, help that old lady. Thank you.
Bingelele ipalame nde, bingelele nompagati. Ika malami ntsemsile mabusa nchamga emkondo ehwa tetin. Umbuzawa muuwan. Ngitela okboza mangabe unenkinga. Uma ma wapalisa RTP ngo twenty-ten. Umasi cheka kamaspara. Bati aikaf, aikafasi futi aikafei. Ntelu okboza kuti sngenza njani. Ngiabo.
Thank you.
Natise akubuzama ma kutiwa usakela umteeto.
Niusegela, niisapoti bill.
Thank you. My name is Thandisile Mabusa from Kondo. And I support the bill. The only question that I have is that my mom applied for an RTP house in twenty twenty-ten. So when you go to check the status of the house, the answer is that it is not approved. So we don't know whether is it approved or not. Because also, they don't know if is it approved or is not approved. So we don't understand, we are confused when it comes to that. So please, can you help us with that? Thank you.
First of all, I want to greet my CIC Julius Malama, my commissioner there. And then, wonge omuntu konakonalana, I do support the bill. For many years, our people have complained about the quality and standard of houses without any help because of the failure of the NHRBC, which operates like a cartel. This is mainly the case with the RTP houses that were built by dishonest contractors. People who don't care about our poor people. Eh, people who just care about their pockets and their stomachs. So we welcome a bill that will protect homeowners from poor quality buildings through the registration of home builders dependent on the quality standards of home building. If we are saying quality buildings, we don't mean boxes of matches. Our government usually, they build houses like boxes of matches. So, stelanatukutistundze say to singa abantu subuyegiti. Niyeke okusakela ezinlu ngatinakela umechis. Ngiabo.
Thank you. First of all, I want to greet our CIC, Mr. Julius Malama and our commissioner. We greet you all.
Now, sogu iskatesite abantu be kalaza nomabe kononda ngazinga lukwakiwa kwezindu. Futi abaltolu sizo ngisho belfuna ngisho nagu NHRBC ekona ngenge ngamange. Manje si yakela kuti ngenge ngoba kuta ukuti ezinle zakiwayo manje. Zakiwaa abantu abanga tembegile. Abantu abaspegelela izisu zabo pele. Sikela ipegelewe leo ndaba. Eh, sia wamukeela lumteeto sivivinyo okona manje. Ukuti uzoshinja izanga. Ika kulazla abantu abambofu. Ungoku kupaliswe abaki abazebebaka ezinlu. Kotwa intebalulegile. Ukuti izingale zinle lakiwayo. Malibe sezinge ni elkul. Imbeli nomaskuluma ngazinga lezinlu ezakiwayo. Asita abantu kfunale bakelu leze zinlu. Ezinyane ezinga ngipogisilka menchis. Akzonizinla abantu kfunale ba thale ekzona lesu. Omaskuluma ngazinga lilukwakiwa kwezindu. Magube izinga eligaal. Ngako, we ask please parliament to respect our dignity by giving us decent houses, not houses like a box matches, the small one. That's all. Thank you so much.
Last ten. One. Two. I'm closing. I'm closing. I'm closing. The last two. The last two. Thank you very much. These are the last hands.
My name is Voyong Kosisme. I'd like to greet everyone as I observe all the protocols. I was born here.
Can I request that who are still in parliament, please your voices must be low?
I was born here in Emelo, but I left ninety-eight, I grew up in Soeweto. And I got a job from a company called Aldo Africa. I think they're the biggest candy producers in Southern Africa. And one of my jobs was to visit RTP settlements where people have RTP houses. We develop shops in those places. And one of the things I discovered in that work I was doing is that half of the people whom you guys have developed RTP houses, they don't have money, they're poor. They end up renting them out. There's businesses there, you know. I'd like to ask human settlement, which is there in intervention before you build people houses where you can identify a source of income? First, before you can build people houses. Because where we normally build houses, there are no sources of income. All these parts of shops are being run by people from outside taking the little that we have. So I'm asking, which is it proper to build people houses where they won't be able to look after those houses? Because I can have an RTP tomorrow and yet I don't have any source of income. I would hire it out to Pakistan or, you know. And we discovered, kuti, it's useless building houses where there are no sources of income, it's dry. These people, they come here, they run all the shops corner to corner, black people life, they have nothing. So I wanted, the reason why I'm raising this thing up, I went as far as trying to get to Ukassim, the COE, NYTA, kuti. What intervention are you guys having in settlements like amrtp houses where young people are underdeveloped? Is there an intervention, maybe a law that you can, guys can pass in parliament that would prevent foreigners buy own to own shops? In our, especially in those places where there's no development? I don't know if it's possible for you guys to have that type of intervention. Actually, I'm so nervous, I can't even construct my sentences proper. And I'm so sorry. Hope you guys can understand what I'm saying.
Unfortunately, you have even exhausted your three minutes. Maybe if olhale pantu uybalangi isa oboya winigele abu sisina utadala.
Okay, ngiyabo.
Thank you.
Eh, ngiyabonga. Eh, mina agen ngomuntu kuti ngabe lethurala emelo kotwa ngamba ngelala eh, eh, nama ngasoweto. Bo kukona langisabenza konumsebenzo etu ke boguti sifa gashale lezinlu zama RTP siyololo kuti ngabe ngwenze gani. Esese tholo kuti ke upningba so ke gubu bavule ama basungule ama business iito lo. Manje ke mina benguza ke ngoba lezinlu zaretpi senzelu ukbonelela abantu abambofu. Gan tike bo na ngoba ke eh. Ganti ge, bo na ngoba ge, abana luto, batina ge sebaka la ama business. Ingakoke, ngitingi, ngitalukboza, gulo mnyangoklali so abantu ukuti, ingabe bayenza yini utuani ngo, loko ukuti abantu banongenelo, yini banengeelo, ngapani ukuti ba, ba, ba thole lezi zindlu. Ngoba, noku ukuti ba, ba ngawazi, noku ukuti ge ba, ba zinaga gele. Ngoba, eskatinasne, ngutolo ukuti la abantu, njongo ba, ba nganamsebe, zibenga na luto. Batate lama RTP, ba kashisale ama Pakistan, laba abantu, ababuya ngapani. Gube ibo abavula itolo, zitwele la imalukshini, zipetwe ibo abantu, ganti tina abachali, asnaluto, siasukpegela nshi. Ngiyenga ayana lapagoo NYTA, ngayo buzu ukuti, ingabe banazo yini izindlo, zo ukutu legelela, noku wonelela, ku lezo zinsalelo, ma kontana na loku empagati. Ogune futi, bengi tanda ukubuzu ukuti, ingabe gungenzeka yini ukuti Parliament ele kale imi umteto, ozo ngabela, lababa hampe, labantu ababuya ngapani, ukuti ba kale ama business ilai kai. Yilo kongebe ngukubuzu ukuti, ngabi Parliament ele ngawazu kusenzela lokunna.
Danbona ne. Nongamnomu sambuya epetale kafu, spaliti, ngewat komiti lasi, Wat twenty-six. Benkeleka human settlement, ukuti ngentele, Wat twenty-six, kune extension Dini in twenty-three and eleven. So extension Dini in twenty-three, kunama RTP akhiwe. Nama RTP akhiwe, most abanikaza, abanengeba kona, bashona, enama beneficiary akona, awakonungena, ma RTP owner, abantu esnga baza, bassebenzayo, ngasibo balai petala, ma beneficiaries, ma beneficiaries akona, akala bakulu. Eno kutemange, njoba imachite se ba fagala iku bu, zo kesama prepaid meter box. En la abantu abatko lela payana, oguplung, abanya basuka bo Emelo, sache kwezini ndavo. Ibona abachala kla ma RTP, ganti bana manye isi, basuka kwezini ndavo, baney ndavo. So epetali salukpeganga le, yon, tokaa human settlement, ngentele nispegelaleka ku. Ngoba kune double picking, abu labo abantu, ibe ganti banao, benkelela, human settlement, ukuti, Ewat twenty-six extension Dini in twenty-three, igae istne teka kulu, ngala ama double picking, ngoba, abanikaza, abakono, ktolama indi. So extension eleveni, wa evict, abantu ngon, fourteen, fifteen. Extension eleveni, abantu abainvictwa, ngentlanta, human settlement, ababala, baselistin, baksistim, batola kalakuti nama pokas komiti, asukege asatengsi ndavo, salabo abantu. Na labo abantu, lava bakusistim, abakono ukbuya, ndavo, nsavo, ngoba kutuwa, abantu abasebenzayi ma yina, abatengi. Benkelela nislamde, nukle yon ndavo, yon kinga extension Dini.
Nitu, you are the ward committee member. Did you report these issues to your council?
Yes, yes.
Ati new council?
Ugushukuti, inkima, lava baysebayalu, abalusanle kancela, lava batengele, wamina, wamange ngene nineteen, kancela lisame, loko ukuti sdo fawu imkombi, ngene nineteen, nimkombi songena ngo, eight twenty. Ngene nineteen, ngsenkonzo, ene ngashisola omkoko, lava abantu sa, baslu kumete.
Who gave those people houses? Wapeo banee, amandwa?
Ilama komita ngekemthetweni, ati mintina.
Ma komitiasa, asamthetweni-
Unama komiti, velanga ekemthetweni, paya alwa, nati maspara.
Okay, but Maspara knows about it?
Yes, yes.
Upu councilawa kuwa?
Capsile masibu.
Capsile ma-
The book.
Masibu. Go and register there and, who councila ushia la ukuti, sumketele, if you cannot assist our people. Go and register there.
Thank you, all protocol observed. My, I want to highlight that the human settlement, they have built houses there at Wat twenty-six, which comprise, which comprise extension thirteen, eleven and twenty-three. There are RTP houses which have been built there and the original beneficiaries have since passed on, but their beneficiaries cannot access those houses because those houses are occupied by people from outside and the rightful beneficiaries are distressed because of these issues. And mostly, we have discovered that the people who occupy those houses come from outside our locality, from places like Emelo and other places. And you find that they have houses where they come from and they get another house there at our locality. So I am making a humble plea for the department to look at those people who have benefited more than once because this is a problem as the indigenous people cannot benefit from this government project. As they, as we have seen there at extension eleven, in twenty-fifteen, there were people who were evicted there because there is a bogus committee which is allocating these RTP houses. And most of the people who are occupying these houses are mine workers who buy these houses. And there are issues there, we have informed the councillor, but there was a fight instead of, when we tried to engage those issues and in, on the nineteenth of June. And that even led to my shack being banned. And our councillor is councillor Mazibugo. We, I mean, she knows about these challenges.
Ngiwelele, ngiwelele, e Parliament, ngiwelele, ama councilawa onke, ngiwelele, numpagatu onke. Minanginomiriemon, agamabuza, Uwat Dini. E, suguma, ngizoguma lana, e- Sakelwa izindu, manga posisi, manga simu nineteen ninety-four. Sakelwa izindu. Angas mnyabona, joba, edila. Izindu ezzi yiholo, ezinachi juang. Wa fawo itoileti lapo, la nga abino mnyango. Lento lena insu, sa oplung, mangbuka izindu ezakiwa manji. Ukuti zichu chiwe, zilungswega, saphlestero. Lezi tina esteli kizo, zi hola, saphlestero, ana guna imfula, siyane tela, amanzi angena ngomtangala, gupsunga kuluma ktiwa asi, kopagati, titola, ma ngabe imfula iana, titola imi bete, imanzi, kukeleza amanzi, pansi. E, ansa, ukuti sasa ini swaga inga, sasa ini sela, ktiwa sizoletela itina, zo okjuva, sizoletela imi nyango ya ma toilet. Sugela nga yolo nineteen ninety-four. Osu, sa oplunga kuluma, masbuka izindu zakiwa emuva, ukuti zichu chiwe, zirai. Zine ma toilet ani mnyango. Two. Sinabantuana, abapalisai izindu. Ma bonese, sebanabo, ten years, solo bayapalisai, kotwa izindu zabo, asi approve. Okay, naktiwa kyochequa, ukuti izindu lezi, ezikoona. Ukutiwe, ziraviwe. Kotwa, solo gu azakiwa, wa kwele abantu abapalisai emuva, izindu bayaito. Bestela ukuti, e, e Parliament isize kakulu. Kakulu kakulu, babuka abantuana abapalisai, bana ngakemi nyagi. Siselinabantuana, abanobote, ateze, ezenzini, njongo ba ngisho kwa ta zichu juang. Angnamalza, okjuva inzu. Niselinabantuana konala, nijuba ngama haltin, kotwa ktaa, labakala, abapalisai. Ukuti ngabe lento leo, isala galena, benkelela ukuti, e Parliament, ayi landelele. Maktiwa wakiwi zindu, ayi landelele. Ukuti lezo zindu zakiwe ganjani, la ngisho kona ukuti sakelwa maholo, besa, batiba zobuga. Bazobuga inzu, omunto ossebenzayo, ema yini, ayi tunile inzu, ukoni lukjuva, ukonile, ugu ilungisa. Babuka netinze, wa isulka, be basengelela, songe, babuka ukuti zirai, na.
Thank you, ma.
Thank you, my name is Emiriam Mabuza from Wat seventeen. We, in nineteen ninety-four, they built us RTP houses. But those RTP houses were not partitioned, it was just a hall. And there is a toilet inside, but that toilet does not have a hall. So it pains me a lot to see the RDPs which are being built now because they look much better than those RDPs which were built during that period. Because most of them have acute structural deficiencies like leakages or leaking when it is raining. And some time ago, we signed, because we were promised that we were going to be given bricks so that we are able to partition those houses. But till today, we haven't received such. Secondly, we are staying with children, sometimes children as old as thirty-eight years. And some of them have registered for these RTP houses for about ten years now. And every time we go and check the status of their registrations, we are told that it has been approved, but no houses are built for them. So it is very difficult for us to stay with children who are, with old children, adult children. Because these houses are not partitioned, we use curtains to partition the houses. So I am making a humble plea to Parliament to monitor these houses when they are built as to whether they are up to standard. Thank you very much.
Yebon, kamalami, muneleli, swagambuli, ewate Dini, preisen. E, isapotzi bill. Kotwa, nesklalo, futi neskele. Gonama RTP, se watso la, kute, klenwa kona, bangasakil, ngendele rai. Balande abantu from Nelsprate, gube ibo bazosakila lezindu, mvawali, ogok, saktola galakla abantu basene, Nelsprate, kizo lezo zindu. Ogune futi, nkala, ngako, ma RTP, basakela, kotwa ama toilet, bo, beganga panji. Imiku ato, ayi ikon. Asiti se abuza kancela, kuti manje, kancela suhamba kanja ndapa, ngoba pelimeku ato ayi ikon, kancela ushia lu kutu Maspara, aga namali. Ogune futi, skala, ngako, ukis, asutoli lapo, kancela ushia lu kuti kmele skipema one thousand and fifty rand, nomunga sebe, zibega ngafi fifty rand, uvuka nsi kandi. So, siaktele ukuti, ngatina nganenelela kakulu, enesiatem, ukuti nalaba ngaitu la, ngizindu njenga ami, kuti sebaza ituola manje, njongo basen kona, siya bon.
Thank you. I, my name is Manelison Thuli, I support the bill. I have only one complaint and request. Most of the time, when the services for home builders are procured, they are procured from contractors from Nelsprate. And eventually, ultimately, those houses, they are allocated to people who come from Nelsprate. So we are asking the Parliament to look into that. The other thing is that, when they build these RTP houses, you find that they do not put the, build the toilet inside, but they put it outside. Another thing, the challenge we have is regarding the infrastructure. The state of our roads is very bad. And when we go to the councillor about these complaints, we do not get any assistance. And the other challenge we have regarding electricity, and when we go to the councillor, the councillor will say, you must go and pay. We are expected to pay one thousand and fifty. And if you do not get that money, you are not going to access those services. Now, I think now that the Parliament is here, we think that their intervention is going to ease this situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We want to take this opportunity to thank you for making input into the bill. Your issues have been noted, indeed, they are going to enrich our bill.
Si tando gunbona kakulu, si bona iskatsene, nienasata, ukuse nize lapo, sbona futi nokponza, izvivane, nilete uvoluene, futi sfunuku ngrinsegisa ukuti, endikshilo lapo, kuzo wenza, oguba lomteto sivivinyo, ussebenze.
But there are some few things that we would want to clarify. Amongst us, we have somebody from NHPRC who would come and talk about, clarify some of the issues that you have raised on the bill. I was not given the name. Veynald Haldenais, you are welcome. You can then clarify certain things that you have heard as the people have been speaking.
I guess, nelungo, elivelaga NHPRC, li kona lapo nati, li ebelele, njongo ba kulunya, eli ngatanda ukretisa izindo, ezile, kuloko kulunya ngako.
And there was an important question that was asked on the, this online registration, which actually excludes those that are in the rural areas. How do you make sure that those in the rural areas are able to access NHPRC?
Kuno mbozo, futi opaganyi siwe, ngopateline, noksebenzai internet, ukuti, kubonagala, ngatiba begela ngapani, abantu balala emakaya, abanga wazukfinielela glezo zindu. Manje, singatando wazige, ukuti, balala nganiswaga nja, nibona, lapo, kwa NH, kwa NHPRC.
The last one was on the, how do you, your ratification program? How do you get people to know that if they've got challenges with the house, there is this program? Just explain what is it that you do with the ratification program?
Puti, uma guno, shelo, enalolo, glungisa, ngokasbona, lusheelo, lzo sisa, abantu, ukuti, bangena nja, nguparatiwa, alolo, lusheelo, ukuse bazi, njeka, banzina, alono, kutili, ussebenza, nja, siyotela upinde, ustretisele, futi, nanga lolo shelo.
Thank you, Jayperson, all members of Parliament and all honourable members, as introduced.
Siya bona kakulu, sishalo, nama lungu, e Parliament, na guobonke, njeka, ama lungu, ayee etulwa, lapo.
My name is Veynald, my surname is Haldenais, from the NHPRC provincial office in Nelsprate.
Ikamalami, ngungu Veynan, Haldenais, ngivelaga NHPRC, e ovisi, else, Nelsprate.
From NHPRC side, we welcome the new ball and we are of the view that this ball will clear out all the grey areas and loopholes as per the current act, Act ninety-five of eight.
Si, kwa NHPRC, si koyla ukuti, lomteto sivivinyo, siawamugeela, futi, si koyla ukuti, zolungisa, ezinyezezindo, ebe zikoona, umteto ni oludu- I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
We are hoping that this new bill will strengthen the relationship with stakeholders. Because as NHPRC, we cannot operate with stakeholders such as municipalities, Department of Human Settlements, and especially the public at large. Because the public at large, we encourage them to come and register with the NHPRC to become registered builders as discussed previously.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
The NHPRC in Mpumalanga has two offices. Our main office is based in Nelsprate. It's opposite the Home Affairs. The exact address can, it's on the brochure of the NHPRC. We had a tent outside where we also gave information about the NHPRC, where our offices are situated, etc., etc.
I'm here to tell you about NHPRC. Obviously, it's Nelsprate. I'm here to tell you about NHPRC. I'm here to tell you about NHPRC.
The other office is situated in Witbank. That is our satellite office. It's fully operational as per the National Nelsprate Office. And that is the two offices within our province.
I'm here to tell you about NHPRC. I'm here to tell you about NHPRC.
Now, our NHPRC National Office acknowledged that it's difficult for builders driving four kilometers to either our Witbank office or either our Nelsprate office. So we introduced a system. It's called e-services, where you can register and renew your registration online.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
So this e-services was, it's a phase approach. So we are busy with phase one. We can only do registrations and renewals currently on the e-services. Later on, we will introduce phase two as well as phase three. We will then accommodate the enrollment process as well. We are trying by all means that the people, not just, who's not just based in where our offices are, but we are trying by all means that builders can register wherever you are in the country to become a registered NHPRC home builder.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
We acknowledge that the internet services is sometimes difficult for people to access. But I can add to that to say that there will always be someone in the office that are willing to assist in your specific language. We also have a system where we experienced in the past that builders that are very old does have the knowledge to register and pass the test, but they don't have the physical knowledge to write the test. So we also have a system where our training officer will sit with you and you will manually write the test. The training officer will ask you questions and you will answer back in order for us to assist you to become a registered builder at the NHPRC.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
Now, from services offered, NHPRC also stands for training. If you are a registered builder, we offer training services for free. Our training officer for the province, maybe some of you have met him already or maybe some of you already went through his training programs. It's Mr. Linda Mobindisa. And I'm going to quote his words. He always say to us, and when we are doing presentations all around Mpumalanga, he always say to the builders, "Why do you want to stay a bricklayer or a tailor or a carpenter when you can do this by yourself? You can register your own company and you are not a subcontractor anymore, but you are called a main contractor. If you don't have technical knowledge, NHPRC encourage you to go and do the training." I myself, I'm a legally qualified person. I didn't have any technical knowledge. When I started with the NHPRC, I went through two of Mr. Mobindisa's trainings and I've managed to pass the test. So it's free of charge, once again. If I can encourage this, this public hearings, the public at large to come and register, because we don't want you to be subcontractors for twenty-five years. We want you to be a main contractor and not being paid on a daily basis, but paid on a monthly basis as a main contractor. So we do encourage on a daily basis, even if you don't feel you have enough technical knowledge to pass the test, we can, we can put you through this training and the pass rate is very successful. If I can pass a technical test from a legal background, definitely you can pass a technical test as well.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
Through you, Chairperson, second last. NHPRC also tried to involve and engage with stakeholders. So recently, we signed a memorandum of understanding with the Steve Twete municipality. And this memorandum will address issues like joint inspections from the municipality's side, from our side, in order to make sure that those houses in those areas are sound, structurally sound houses, that will be there for the public as well as the private sector.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
We are trying by all means to enter into MOUs with all the municipalities around Mpumalanga. And we are of the view that this will strengthen especially the inspection process where NHPRC will inspect if the house is structurally sound and the municipality has their own mandate to inspect based on their mandate and regulations.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
Now, lastly, from the question. As we are currently enforcing the Housing Consumer Protection Measures Act, this act talks about a warranty cover for units and houses that are enrolled. Now, once your house is enrolled, the NHPRC will then provide you a warranty cover. The first one is three months' maintenance. The second one is one-year roof leak from date of occupation as per the occupation certificate from the municipality. And the last one is five-year major structural defects. So we, as the NHPRCs, are of the view that this warranty, once a project is enrolled with us, successfully enrolled with us, this warranty stretches as far as any RDP house, CRUs, whatever the case may be. So the warranty protection that we provide for houses in urban suburbs must be there for houses in rural areas on condition that this project or residential unit is enrolled. I thank you, Chairperson.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On what the NHPRC have said. If MMC, as I've been giving you the summary, I've indicated, if the MMC or the MEC responsible for human settlement, they are not enrolling these RDP houses, they will be responsible as a member of the executive, as a, as an MEC, not the responsibility that has been given by the government. They are forced to register all these houses so that the cover should then cover those houses as been built on the ground.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
There was the issue of the blocked project. The minister has come to Parliament and commit that he's going to unblock all those blocked projects, but the program will take three years.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
And the minister had called all the MECs together and they've agreed on that program. We as Parliament, we have started the process of calling the MECs for them to account for those block projects. Last Wednesday, we have met with the MEC from Mpumalanga, Mr. Masilu, and the MEC from Limpopo and from, who's, pardon? KZN. We've called them. Next week, we are calling those that are in the northwest, northern Cape and western Cape to come and tell us about how they unblocked those block projects.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
And on the beneficiary lists that change frequently because we go for election, the new ward councillor comes and do away with the list and start a new process. The minister again has come to Parliament and commit that he's going to digitize the process of the beneficiaries so that promote transparency and beneficiaries will then be involved and know at what number I am as a person and the board would allow to change the beneficiary list.
I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you. I want to know if we can help you.
There is the issue of people selling the houses, renting the houses. The Housing Act or the Housing Code, even if you get this house, you're not allowed to sell this house for a period of eight years. And even if you finish your eight years, if you want to sell your house, the first point of departure is government. You must go to government and say, "I've finished my eight years." Uh therefore, I want to make money out of my house. Therefore, I must, I want to sell this house. Government will then buy it from you, uh give it to another person.
Nailenda ba manje ekona yokta isi zindlu. Nayo enavumelegi ile kodwa eyenze gayo ukutumundatole indlu. Kodwa besa bonukuti anenzimali giona besa itaiza. Omteto okona nomteto kuzpatai Code of Conduct nomteto begiwe wesezindlu. Uti unahlala indli ni eminiyaga engu eight awvumelegi lukuitengisa kule eight years. Kodwa ge sitigenzeka after eight years usuti mfunukwenzimali ngalenlu. Eskundlenzo kuto itengise. Omteto uti hamba uyeguhulumeini. Ufikuchelu huhulumeini ukuti nanzilende ngayo senhlaleku yo eight years manje. Senmfunukwenzimali ngayo ngitaiza. Besuhulumeini eighteena kuwe leo indlu yako. Besa kuba uyegonoma yo ukutwenzani ngayo. Ayukutwena uzitaiza leo.
So nobody is allowed to sell this house uh with um without consulting government. But we have realized that because our people, they are not aware of the clause in the uh in the Housing Code, um they continue to do these mistakes. And we we want to take this opportunity to inform particularly councillors who are here. Um and umpagati, you must know that you are not allowed to do that.
Ngako yata kutige akuvumelanga kukta isi kodwa siyazu kuti ienzeeka. Mlambe ienzeeka abantabazi umtetabawazu kuta ukvumeli lok. Kodwa ge lembyizo ge sizo siza loko. Ekakulu kazi kumakansela akona azu ukuti omteto okona akuvumeli lok. Kufanele umuindlu maso itaiza ubuyele kuhulumeini.
And the minister again has actually committed government that on the on the beneficiary list, they are prioritizing people with disability, child-headed family and elderly. So we 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 want to request councillors, particularly what councillors, that those people are not supposed to queue like any other person. They need to prioritize on the list of beneficiaries.
Utu ngongo shage uma efige taza uyewasho ukuti uzmisele ukuti kulu lolu olkona. Lo abantu kufanele bashlomune pezulu. Abantu kufanele babiswe kala. Ungafanele bayonge no shwinotsuke lu kona. Abantu abakubaze gila bapila ngokubazera. Abantu abadala eminiyaga sebe kulili. Ganyana bantu ababayisingani kodwa abahola bapete imizi. Aba nomtwalo nagege la imizi ya kubo. Labu bantu ngoketegi. Bona banige zwinda aweyabo eketegile. Futi bono ukufanele babege kala. Ntaba ngutilo kugebasiza genama kansela akona lapa uktabanga ngala bantu abathatu. Ungongo shi azo peze leo ukuti kufanele balutole kala usiso.
And it's indeed that uh those that are staying in other people's house, there is no in any way that you are going to get the title deed. The best way would be that go to municipality and say, I'm sitting in this house, it's not mine. Therefore, I I request that uh I I I I be registered and therefore so that I can then be able to get my own house. Because the problem is that when you are dead, your kids would not access the title deed and you are bet- you are putting burden to your children. It will it will be important that as society, we are able to deal with these things when we are still alive as parents.
Seki yata ta manju kuti uma ohlala emzinon ngewono wako. Indaba yoktolita itela njefelu yukrolo ngoba ngegu ltolita itela. Inde ngono ngayenza hamba ge manje uyeguhulumeini yomkazel ukuti huhulumeini nhlaleni no ngewoneha. Kodwa benzatela onpalise onfagoshwinilo abantabazotola izindlu. Ngoba inkina eyenze gayo ukuti njongobu ohlala kulilo ohlala gion. Sa sa uyafa. Wonke ge omtwalu suyowelega nenzako esnga senayo zona indawoyokhlala netaitela zibe zingena.
Um and all the project of government, including the houses that have been built, were supposed to have established the steering committees which consist of communities around those areas. And then uh they employ even the se- the person called C L O. This C L O is the is the license officer between the community and the 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 government. So it's important that all these projects, if they have been uh built in your areas or the weather construction of roads or whatever, the steering committee, not those thugs that are selling government houses. The steering committee that will be elected by the community must be able to monitor the progress of those houses. Those thugs that are selling government houses, we are going to follow them them up and we are going to arrest them.
Uma kunomsebenzi umi project eyenze gayo ge umpagati neslala kuona. Ngaba ukwakiwa gumkwakonoma yini. Ngomteto kufanele wekona i committee. Okuyona esokondisa ukwenza ukwamba walo msebenzi. Le committee ge manje yapegelela ngoba kule committee kuba konu mutoktwa i C L O. Solo muntu utromanisa umpagati ganyano huhulumeini ukuzi kwazuksebenzi la. Ngako kunsekani ge manju kuti naani umpagati niweinu. Iba kona leo committee njalo uma kuba ne project nomomsebenzi owenzegayo endaweni. Ah ilezi skebengue izitaiza izindlu. Lezo skebengue sesitendenza.
Um those are the issues that were raised and we'd want to encourage N H B R C to continue with the consumer education so that our people can understand what benefit do they have on these houses. And we've even suggested in the last meeting that on the happy letters, the happy letters must indicate that this house has been insured for so many years and then what 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 are the benefit of the consumer. So so would encourage N H B R C with the department in the province and the MMC responsible for human settlement to have a campaign of educating citizens on the on 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 their rights and 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 what are their benefit out of the the programs.
Njongoba lolulhlelo lshoselwe ukvigela abatengi. Siyakutaza ge i N H B R C ukuti mayutwashi isumpagati. Mayutrazele ma wenzu ukkekeisho umpagati wazi ngama lungelo na. Omuntu mayetholingwa temkazela ongindlu eh eh asuke itola ngalewiskati. Mayitraze geno ukuti lezwiyako ikava yayo itatiskatis gaganat. Abumpagati wazi ukuzukwazukvigela. Ngako iloke siyakutaza yo guyona ibambisene no ngongo shi abapegelela uklaliswa kwa abantu. Ukuti umpagati ma ufundi iswe ma uaxi iswe ngalo ku ukuzukwazi. Ukuzuzokwazi ge manju kuti ukvigela.
There are people who have said government, uh parliament must establish the committee to monitor as these houses have been built. But we just want to inform you that parliament has established offices throughout the country through members of parliament. You have constituency offices everywhere in the country. It might be uh sometimes that the constituency offices is painted green, black and gold. Uh those that are not in favor of that colors, they don't use that thing. Other um constituency offices is painted red. Um you don't think I'm not a uh supported member of this organization. I don't go that in that offices. The others painted blue. Uh you, those constituency offices are meant to help communities. The members of parliament in those constituency offices. Take those issues and raise it with the relevant department on your behalf. Go into those offices and register your challenges as you 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 find them. Don't wait for parliament, the for the meetings or uh the visit of members of parliament.
Abanyeba yebavezinda ba ukuti ma kube konuxolwa kweza kiwa ma inspectors opega. Kodwa sifuna nazukuti parlamente.
Not my inspectors, the committee.
Ama ama committee, yeba ama committee. Abafezilu kubekonama committee abantabazopega. Sifuna nazukuti kagati parlamente sile wenzile lok. Atwele kuzo zonke izindao ama committee njalo. Ungenzeka je ukuti tinaspaza iswa imbala. Esibo na ngapandle uma sia lapo mlambo bonumbalulhlaza obonvuno sakolite. Besu tay ulaba axilonikwe mblami ngangete na kulo ngtolu sizo. No ma bonumbalobo mvugla ngapa ukuti angikogloklelo mblami. Besu ngangete. Kantila bantu abantu ge abanasisa abameleli parlamente abanaksiza. Ngakosiyankutaza njongoba umpagati ukuti iani lapo nifige nifagi iskalo enazo. Ngoba basukebe melele loni parlamente. Akfanele silinde kuzi kube imbise fana nalena kube imasi velisi vezi iskalazo zetu. Masisi veze ngoba bakona ma committee njalo amiswe parlamente.
And the new bill on the in on the inspectors that supposed to be employed by N H B R C with municipalities and and provinces. Um if they go into the areas and approve houses that are not of quality, the responsibility would be taken to them. They'll have to, the penalty will be going to them as the inspectors.
Manju maspegwa ngala basholi ge manje kufanele basholi ukuti izi ina lezindlu linga kanani. Ngowalo omteto sivivinyo omusha eskuluma ngawa. Oh ma benale bati izindlu sezingeni li pezulu. Eligale kandaziko ezingeni eligale pezulu. Omtwalo ge manje sozoba pezu wabo. Bonala basholi. Ukfaile basholi zindlu. Ibo ge manje osokzofanele basawule ngalomo na kalosuke wenzegi.
With that note, we want to thank you very much for availing yourself to these public hearings. As I've indicated, some of the issues that you have raised, we are going to look at them as we discuss as parliament, the bill itself and 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 make sure that they get incorporated into the bill.
Siyabonga kulu ngutini zile nabane sandla nafagi taza kuloku. Futi gonkenikshilo zizo tata. Kuzo tumase totoa ngapambo ngoba lomteto sivivinyo pasi soobo omteto. Izinte zixini zixilo zizo tachange lo kutotoe nganazu.
Those specific issues that we have raised, we are going to take them to the M E C responsible for human settlement and as parliament will follow up on them whether they have been implemented or not.
Iskalo ne zipanopawale nikshilo kuzo tatuwa kui iwe kusiwiso kui M E C. Besage ti nanjenge parlamente. Besespegao ukuti lezo zindo okulu nyuenazo okaluenazo ziyanziwa yini.
We want to thank you very much and we want to request the volunteer to come and close this meeting with a prayer.
Siyabonga kulu zizo tanda uktaela ge umakoni volunteer ele ngathanda ukuzala. Lapa ngapambili lize beseli sivalela lapa ngomtandasu.
And after you have with prayed, uh please don't move. There are food that have been prepared for you.
Uma ge sethandaziwe siyotela ukubaninga hambi ngoba kunokula indlu kuselulekona.
Can we rise and take um bow? Those that can rise. Yeah Baba, you can hear?
Yes, sir. Kosi siyabonga babuksipalelithuba. Okubaba ba umshanganu wetu. Ubeympumalelo na ngokambisan. Nyakuleka baba na ngaleskati bazo puma bahambwe izinlala sonke. Babirele nklunkulesingosini sonke ey kona. Ba pepe Baba. Bonka kulu mo yongwele kuzo beparat, amen.
Amen.